Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Blue Lake City Council Meeting of December 14th, 2021. It's a special council meeting. And we have with us our full council with Chris Curran, Elaine Hogan, Benjamin McCready, Marty, and your Mayor Adeline Jones. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me in the Pike's Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mandy, will you be our clerk this evening?
I will.
Aye. And can we establish a quorum of the council, please?
Yes, we can. Mayor Jones?
Here.
Mayor Proton Gordy?
Here.
Councilmember Hogan?
Here.
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember McCready?
Here.
And we are all present and accounted for. Item two, approve the agenda. Is there anyone from council that would like to change or move anything around? It's a very full agenda as we are combining November and December together. Can we move number six up, Susan Seaman? You want? Okay. Sounds good. So six under public comment. Anybody from the audience that would like to change anything from the agenda? Yeah, wait, one more. Keith is here.
Oh, Keith, yeah. Yeah, Keith's number eight. He's after zero.
Do you want to move him up?
Maggie's here also for zero.
Okay, good. All right. We'll just have to wait. Okay, so our agenda will be slightly changed with item six, our Go Slow, Watch the Road presentation, to go under public comment. We need a motion to approve the agenda with that change. So.
Second.
Moved by Summer Gordy, second by Chris Curran, to approve the agenda with the change of item six going under public comment. Any further discussion from council? Anything from public? And back to council for the vote. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. We have an agenda. Item three is our public comment item. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city. That is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for the session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone for public comment? I don't see any hands raised. Our entire group. Okay. All right. Thank you for joining us. We are now on the item that was item six, Go Slow, Watch the Road. The safety initiative and proclamation will have discussion and direction. As a member of this task force, I must say I was really happy to be part of it and see these traffic issues addressed. And we have Mayor Susan Seaman here with some information that she'd like to show us and share with us. So item.
Do you want me to draw the ideas? Yeah. Can you guys send all the emails?
Thank you. I'll just stand.
I'll hold it up for something here.
So the public, or traffic safety task force was an idea that came out of the city of Eureka. And as you may know, we have a lot of traffic accident collisions, but it doesn't stop at the border of Eureka. It happens all over the county. And Humboldt County happens to be number one for pedestrian deaths and injuries. And thought it was really important that the discussion was broader than just in Eureka. And I'm so happy to have both Mayor Jones and councilmember Hogan involved in the process, as well as folks from the county of Humboldt, city of Rio Del. We have lots of different cities participating and CHP, different law enforcement agencies. So public safety or traffic safety is not just about public information. That's what this campaign primarily is, but it also takes great engineering and enforcement. And Blue Lake has great engineering in your city. It is designed to drive slow here, which is very nice. But nonetheless, we do have these wonderful signs that have been purchased for the campaign through the Department of Public Health that say, Go Slow, Watch the Road. And you will see them all over the county, I hope, for people that are asking people simply to pay attention when they're driving around. We have a campaign similar to this in Eureka. It's on F Street, which goes very fast, and it says, Slow the F Down Campaign. And the county actually did do some, some speed analysis and saw that the speeds didn't go down. So we're hoping that this will do the same thing.
Absolutely. We have bumper stickers. We have signs for lawns if people are in a high-density area or a visibility area in Blue Lake. We have lots of lawn signs. And then we have some signs for fences also that are pretty large.
And they're all three. So I don't, I don't know who, I would say contact Mayor Jones and she will let you know how to get them. You can probably get them here at City Hall.
Yeah.
And then we have a proclamation that several, that all many different communities are signing. So far, we have city of Eureka, city of Rio Del, Humboldt County, Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, and city of Arcata have signed it. We're just going around asking different cities to make this commitment to transportation safety. So if you would like to read it and discuss whether or not you want to support it, that'd be great.
Okay, so Go Slow, Watch the Road campaign kickoff November 17th, 2021 was when we actually kicked off the program, yeah, at City Hall in Eureka. Whereas Humboldt County ranked number one out of 58 counties for traffic collisions involving a pedestrian, according to data in 2018, has fatal collision rates double the national average and nearly triple those of California. And whereas effective transportation safety policies include a multifaceted approach, including infrastructure development and improvements, enforcement of the laws and education, and the personal responsibility and behavior of those who use streets. And whereas drivers have an inherent responsibility to maintain a culture of respect and courtesy, avoid causing harm, and protect the community's most vulnerable residents. And whereas Humboldt County residents pride themselves on being values-driven, innovative, and proactive problem solvers who are responsible, responsive and responsible protectors of the community's residents and visitors. And whereas national statistics and local experience indicate that low-income people, people of color, older people, and people with disabilities are more likely to be killed by traffic collisions while walking or biking. And the county-wide traffic safety task force is committed to addressing these tragic inequities. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, that the following jurisdictions and organizations in Humboldt County recognize that safely navigating our streets and sidewalks is a cooperative activity and traffic collisions are not inevitable. The Go Slow, Watch the Road campaign, created by the Traffic Safety Task Force, brings local communities together to adopt the goal to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while increasing safe, health, and equitable mobility for all. When we pass this, I will be very happy to sign it. So is there any discussion from council about this item? No questions or comments? And anyone from the audience who would like to chime in on this? Okay, well then I would ask that the proclamation be adopted and the mayor be authorized to sign the proclamation. So move. I'll second. Thank you. Moved by Summer Gordy, second by Elaine Hogan, sorry, to have the mayor sign the adopted Go Slow, Watch the Road proclamation. Does any further discussion from council? Back to public. And on to the council for the vote. All of them say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. I didn't bring a shirt. You know, I was thinking, I mean, all I have is a pen.
So we can either leave it here and you can sign it later, or you can just sign it.
Well, it's a blue pen, okay. Name, sign, and print.
Just sign.
There's no. It's real big there, right?
I love that we're all doing this together.
And they want today's date? The 14th, isn't it? Okay. It's official.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susan. Hard work. And thank you, council members. Okay, so we will move on then to what is item four, Resolution Number 1192, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Blue Lake and in findings, first went to government post section 54953 as amended by Assembly Bill 361, and authorizing the continued use of virtual meeting devices. Bye, Susan. Thank you. I was thinking proposition should have gone ahead of things because of the need. So there has to be at every meeting an extension of the Zoom meeting protocol when we are in this pandemic. So we will have to continue to do this month by month. What on earth? Motion to adopt Resolution Number 1192. Second motion? Okay, there's a motion by Summer Gordy, second by Elaine Hogan, to adopt Resolution 1192. Any further discussion from council? Any question or comments from the public? Okay, and back to council for the vote. All of them say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. I've noticed a lot of people are enjoying this format of being at home and zooming in. So hopefully we'll be able to do those. Yeah. Yeah, it does expand things a little. We are now on item five, Resolution Number 1193, a resolution, City Council of the City of Blue Lake accepting a utility easement for sanitary sewer infrastructure. And when you're happy, you have the maps and the easement documents. Mandy, did you want to add anything to this discussion?
No, this is a pretty straightforward process. This is just the city accepting the easement. It's nothing outside of the ordinary, you know, process when easements are granted. So it's for sanitary sewer.
Yeah, it's not a new easement.
It's not. No, they're. And actually keep us here.
Yeah.
It's, I believe it's because of an adjustment to their building. I think they're adjusting their porch or deck.
She's on one of the drawings.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council? Is there any question or comment from public? Okay, back to council. It looks like we need a vote to adopt Resolution Number 1193.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 1193.
Motion by Chris Curran, second by Ben McCready to adopt Resolution 1193, granting the easement for the sanitary sewer line. Any further discussion from council? Public, back to council for the vote. All of them say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Okay, we have our easement. All right, 67, Zero Waste Humboldt Presentation.
Yeah, and I believe Maggie is on. There she is. Hi, Maggie.
Hello, welcome.
Hi. Can you see me? I am just trying to get my lighting here. Okay, so I have a short presentation. I promised to keep it brief. We have, we organized about, gosh, seven or eight years ago, an annual, in the middle of November, an annual time just to work with local governments to publicize and some businesses, you know, thing, zero waste and for people to learn more about it. And instead of a proclamation, every few years, we like to just come and update our local elected leaders. And so instead of November, we're coming at a time that's more convenient for you guys in December. So let's see, can I use your share screen?
Let me make sure I have it on here. Okay, you should be good to go.
Okay. Um, and let me mess with it a little bit here. Okay. Can you see it?
Yes.
You can. Okay, I have something else here that's in the way. So I can't see it. And.
Okay, there, that's good.
Okay, well, so thanks again. And I'll just get started right away. My colleague, who was gonna do a lot of this tonight, is not here, so I was caught by surprise a little bit. One of the most important things, since the early days of recycling in the early 70s, Earth Day, 1970, there's been an important hierarchy of what we now call sustainable materials management. It helps with planning, investment, just to understand environmental impacts. And the hierarchy is what starts with, it's based on the old three Rs that we kind of all went through school with. We no longer use reduce because it could mean many different things to many different people. And source reduction was kind of an industry term, but we learned from public health. Everybody seems to understand prevention, waste prevention. So Zero Waste Humboldt's emphasis and top priority is waste prevention in our public education and everything that we do. And this is not just for Zero Waste Humboldt. It is the hierarchy for sustainable materials management. And then we come down to the next is materials reuse and all the many different ways that we can do reuse. And some forms of waste prevention are actually reuse. They're very closely related. And then after you've done everything you can with those, then you go to recycling and composting, and then finally, safe disposal. What happened in, started happening in the 80s, and then in particular, 1989, critical, very, very important landmark legislation was AB 939. And we began to forget all about waste prevention and materials reuse. And the whole focus was on recycling. So we're learning now. The problems have kind of come home to roost that if even a tiny fraction of human resources, financial resources, infrastructure over the past several decades had been dedicated to waste prevention and materials reuse, some of the problems that we're having with recycling right now, we wouldn't be having. So I can't emphasize it enough. What we've learned with a lot of different kinds of surveys, public attitude preference, what people are aware of, is that they tend to think of the old three Rs as equal. Reduce, reuse, recycle. They're all equal. And they're not. Okay, next here. So just for a few examples, deconstruction instead of demolition and used building materials, reuse centers, thrift shops, those, that's, we're learning, actually, we're getting better and better at measuring their value and their value in terms of all forms of reuse, in terms of climate action. And when you reuse rather than use disposable or even recycling, the, there's a far greater benefit for greenhouse gas emissions and carbon footprint. So then in the top middle, everybody's most, this is probably the thing that is most familiar in Humboldt County, and it's partly because of state law, but it's reusable containers, bags and other forms of containers. The bottom left example is from the co-op, but more and more stores are starting to make it viable, make it easy for you to purchase most of your food, not just grains and nuts, but all kinds of food, and you can bring your own container. On the far right is Darren Ferrera, proud third-generation dairyman who invested in sanitizing equipment. And you will be seeing this more and more. And we're trying to help local businesses that are beverage makers of all types to, nationwide, it's being called the return to returnables or the refillable revolution. But now you can buy local dairy milk in a returnable bottle. Rinse it out, take it back to the same store where you bought it. And the small ones in the middle, they're just examples. You don't have to be fancy about this. The bottom one is my favorite go-to. I don't, I like my glass jars on the counter, but I don't like to carry glass around with me in the backseat of the car. And so I have some old yogurt containers with a good snap on lid, and I take them into the store with me with my reusable bags. And the little one in the middle is just an example of some fancier ones that you can buy, you know, like the old Tupperware. The Blue Lake participated in our network of, the Refill Not Landfill Network of 10 local governments, and actually, not 10 local governments, but we distributed 10 reusable, excuse me, refillable water bottle refill stations. And so right there with your, you're skating with, I'm blanking on. Yeah, that's where yours has been placed. That has worked so well for so many reasons. It's a classic zero-waste and reuse project because they're highly visible. And so people learn from that. They're, each one has a clicker, a counter on it. And so we've been able to, even with really modest, in the first two years, which were right before COVID, we were able to monitor their usage. So there were a total of 10, two local high schools, and then the others were in local governments. And what has happened so far, and I think that will increase when the day comes that we go back to a normal situation with all the parks and rec buildings being used more. But in our first two years, what the counters were showing, and again, we ratcheted back a little bit just to be conservatives, was that 50,000 single-use plastic water bottles were avoided from the waste stream just by trying to make those more convenient. And the nice thing that's happened is they've been kind of monitored and washed by some local governments. So now they're adding on more. Now there's at least a couple at the airport for people. I'll do this really quick. This is a fast forward, but I think it might help as elected leaders help you kind of understand the trends and what's been going on. So I'm just old enough that I've watched this happen. In the 1960s and 1970s, some of the first kind of big impactful California legislation statewide had to do more with litter and California's big embarrassment of having roadside litter all along I-5 and High 101 and all of the major highways in California. And there were some strong allies in dealing with that in California's tourism and hospitality industry. And even in agriculture, too many farmers were finding in the bellies of dead farm animals, cows, some of the first fast-food containers. And so recycling was brought up as a healthier alternative. Instead of tossing it out the window, here's where you can drop it off. And then in the 1980s, 1990s, it became more of California's concerns about landfill space. Where are we gonna put it all? We hadn't even gotten to the point in our consciousness yet where reducing it in the first place would be at the point of purchase, proactive upfront would be better. But so a lot of concern, not in my backyard, that syndrome. It was difficult for elected leaders when a lot of, all over the state, a lot of controversy about landfill siting. And then how do you correctly build a landfill? How do you cap off and close down a landfill? And so this little California real estate was the issue. So now going into the 2000s, and I'm sure you're all aware of this, it really has been climate change and how, the connection between how much and what type of waste we generate and climate change. So when you make key choices when you go shopping to not use single-use plastics, to use reusable, and just veer away from overpackaging, overwrapping your food, it is climate action that you're taking. So it's been global warming and high public awareness about plastic pollution. So the big ones that I'm thinking you're aware of are SB 1383 and AB 1826. These were passed around 2016. It took a while for the state to really translate the law into regulations and implementable mandates. And so now Humboldt Waste Management Authority has a contract with Edgar Evans Associates, and they're really looking at a county-wide approach. And so I'm thinking that councilmember Elaine, you're familiar because you've been bird-dogging this on the HWMA board. And it will involve, in a phased-in approach, changing habits and business operations, food waste prevention, edible food recovery. This is where we have been working the most lately, contracts with the city of Arcata and Eureka to really help them work with businesses, business-to-business support. There's some really great examples in Humboldt County of that. And then food waste to farm animals and food waste to compost, carbon farming, food digestion. So it's kind of in that order. We always, we always in zero-waste work for the highest and best use first. So getting food to people who need it is the top priority. And all these different steps, these different activities will be a part of this law. It is being called the most significant solid waste, waste reduction legislation since 1989. And so I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna read all of these, but we were excited. We're really aware that laws don't solve all the problems. But there are, sometimes they really help support the work that we're trying to do at the local. But there, there are sometimes they, they really help support the work that we're trying to do at the local level. So these were all passed, signed by the governor October the 5th. The first one, AB 881, helps the state to better measure how much plastic is actually recycled and prohibits plastic waste exports going to other countries in the name of being recycled. We've had too many exposes on the evening news of six-year-olds and their families picking through, you know, in Malaysia, Southeast Asia, and in many parts in poorer countries. And we're calling that recycling when it's really, often it's being either burned or pushed into their waterways or just, just dumped. So better systems for that. AB 1201 is label, improving labeling for compostable products. AB 962 makes it easier for, and this is one we have particular interest in, easier for brewers and other beverage producers to create reusable glass bottle systems. And this is around the country, return to returnables. So that just like the example earlier of Ferrera Dairy and their returnable bottles. And so this, this will be, it won't hit the ground running January 1st, but we've been doing in the past two years, a lot of research with the help of engineers at HSU and trying to figure out ways to make it affordable and, and to help our local beverage makers, whether it's, it's juice, kombucha, cider, wineries, breweries to switch back to refillables. AB 1276 is to reduce plastic foodware unless someone requests it. And then the last one is one of particular significance in Humboldt County and in most parts of the country. Really serious problems with contamination at curbside recycling collection. And a lot of it has to do with people actually believe what the, what the packaging on says. And so this is prohibiting manufacturers from using the recycling chasing arrows. And there's just, I mean, it's, it will continue, it'll be a forever battle. The, the marketing departments are working overtime for, in particular, the petrochemical industry that makes all the single-use plastic doodads. They, the, the bottles have beautiful waterfalls and they, they really mislead. And in fact, in 2013, the Federal Trade Commission and several state attorney generals prohibited, did, did a similar kind of thing. So it's an ongoing battle, but we have been bamboozled as consumers just constantly misled. So this is wrap-up. I just wanted to do, to do a quick update for you. Lots going on. We will be doing more work for the cities of Arcata and Eureka. And their hope is that the reports that we're producing and some of the templates and the models will be of use to other smaller cities. And I'll just tell you, I usually talk this fast, but it's even worse right now. I just came off of two full-packed days of the National Zero Waste Conference. We haven't had it for a few years because of COVID. It was all on Zoom. They did an excellent job and constant excellent speakers and good examples from around the country on reuse systems and many different types of reuse systems. And so you'll be hearing about this more and more. A lot of it has to do with plumbing and commercial dishwashing equipment and, and just different types of reuse in Humboldt County. We need the infrastructure to, to do it. That's really all that I have. Let me pull this down now. And get it off of, there we go, the shared. Oh, here we go. Stop share. So any questions for me or?
I, I heard that there is an issue with recycling anyway, that they're not taking cans and bottles. And, and there's been a lot of disturbed people about that, that they're really recycling is not what it used to be anyway. So we have to definitely.
You, you're, you're right and we, we can't give up and we, you know, we need to support the recycling efforts. We do, my, my thinking is after, you know, this all got started in the seventies. So that's 50 years, after 50 years of doing it, it is time for a reassessment in a way, figuring out better ways of doing things. When the problem of contamination really got going, there were several, there's several key factors that come into play. One is it's not China's fault. China wasn't requiring more of us than our own domestic mills and our domestic buyers of recycled material. It's, it became a handy-dandy way to just get the recyclables, you know, marketed and sent off to China or other overseas places. So that became problematic. A lot of our local mills, our local markets closed down. They could not handle in their, in their facilities to be able to manufacture with recyclable material. They could not handle the mixed material they were getting. And, and so it has been problematic. So it's, it's when we went to completely unsupervised, you know, when you, when you have some furniture or clothing or household items that you want to take to a secondhand store. I don't know if any of you have done it, but they look through it very carefully because it becomes their garbage they have to pay for if they can't sell it. And so it's very closely supervised and, and checked. So if that's the way recycling was in Humboldt County before at curbside, we, we went for sheer numbers of trying to get more and more people to recycle. And in that worked, but we lost quality. And so it's, it's something that can be fixed. It's going to take time. We, we just all have to work together on it. And then another big, I've mentioned, a big part of it is the unrelenting misinformation and misleading average, everyday consumers, people who want to do the right thing. You know, we get a lot of questions at Zero Waste Tumble, but it says it's recyclable on the container or on the plastic bag. And it may be in Tallahassee, Florida, but it's not here. And so whoever your collector is or wherever you take your recyclables, whether it's Humboldt sanitation or ecology, that's who you have to check with because they're the ones that, yeah. So you're right. It's, this is a difficult time and all the more reason to work on reuse and, and waste prevention at the point of purchase.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you guys. I appreciate your time.
Thanks Maggie.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council?
Hey Deb, not really a question, but I am interested in seeing how we can make events at our city facilities, zero waste and our city-sponsored events, things that happen in the park. Especially, I know Maggie was talking about some sanitation equipment and things that would be necessary to get like the beverage containers, for example, for the beer booth and things like that. And I'm just interested at some point in talking more about how.
We're very happy to help you, work with you on large outdoor events. We do workshops for producers of large outdoor events. And the North Country Fair, a, a two-day event that thousands of people come to has ended up being a really great learning model. They reduced their waste by more than two-thirds and we're talking tons now. It, it has really been remarkable and we just keep working with the vendors. So we're happy to, we love Blue Lake. We're happy to work with folks in Blue Lake with your large music events and, and what's going on there. Yeah, yeah.
We did start that as part of our policy. We did, sorry Maggie, you can't see me, this is Mandy. We did work with Zero Waste Humboldt. We started to implement some policies for our larger events. So we prohibited the sale of single-use water, plastic water. We bought water jugs, we have the water bottle like stations. We were starting to require compostable utensils or I think the park even purchased a bunch of forks and things that could be rented out and some dishware. So we were starting to implement that as part of our, our use agreements. And, but we just haven't had any, anything going on for a while. So, but that'll, Trevor will pick up.
I was gonna say it's a good time now that we have Trevor.
Yeah, absolutely.
I wanted to, oh Trevor, hi. I wanted to mention to you that one small project that I hope you'll participate in. We're asking all of the, we haven't started it yet. It's like in January, we're going to get going. We're asking all of the, the seven cities in the county. I don't know that this affects the county very much, but all local governments have some kind of a permitting for when there are outdoor events on city property. And there's, I, I believe everybody has a one-page form, some kind of form for reporting waste generated at the event. And so we'd like to see everybody's, we might help you update it. This is also part of SB 1383, when it comes to any kind of food waste generation. So we're happy to, to help you with that.
I can, I can say we're working with CalRecycle and they providing all the documents that we need. And if I see anything that's missing, I'd be happy to reach out to you and make sure we're at least in compliance. And if not, if not better, working towards a more sustainable park and rec event future.
They've been really good to work with. All that we do sometimes is localize it a little bit. Yeah. Well, thank you guys.
I'd be happy to meet with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Maggie, thanks. All right. That's not an action item, just presentation. So we'll move on then to another presentation. This one from the Mad River Alliance and an update on the Powers Creek Restoration Project. And we're going to have Keith Bernard, I think, join us and has been here with us. Hello Keith.
Hi, hi. Excuse me, my, I'll, I'll, I'll have to keep this pretty short because I think I'm getting a cold. At least I hope I'm getting a cold anyway. So can I share the screen right away?
Yeah, you should have, you should be able to now Keith.
Oh, I see, okay. Okay.
Well Keith is waiting, oh, what, what's the generation for this? Is this our own city?
That's not working.
Oh, yeah, we can.
Yeah, it's working now.
Okay. Can you see the cursor?
Yeah.
The, the arrow?
Yes.
Okay. Um, let's see. This is AutoCAD, so sometimes things just jump out of the screen here like that. So, hi, I'm Keith Barnard and I'm working with Mad River Alliance on the Powers Creek Restoration Project. Back in October, I was scheduled to present our project to the city council, but we were unable to connect to the Zoom meeting for some reason. So on October 30th, I emailed the basic presentation to council members and received at least one response. So I assumed that that email worked and I'm hoping that you all have at least some knowledge and background of our restoration project and then I can sort of proceed from there. In that email, I mentioned that the Blue Lake Rancheria had replaced a bridge that had been a partial migration barrier for fish and restored the channel reach downstream. Up until yesterday's rain, yay, that, that restored reach still had not seen any flowing water. That's down this area. I don't, if you can see my cursor, well, it's not really that cursor here. Okay, this, hopefully you can see this, this arrow, this big arrow. No, anyway, that's the, the rancher rea reach there. And I heard from Michelle Fuller with Rancheria yesterday that it was finally flowing to the Mad River. So I got a photo of it this morning and I'll see if I can switch over to that. Oh boy. Where's my little switch thing? Okay, well, I guess I can't find that. Well, I'm going to move on then. Anyway, our restoration project will eventually connect with theirs in a very similar design. So this blue, the blue line is the, the thaw wag of our, our design. Thaw wag is the flow line. And their, their reach was like I say, very similar, base, basically based on the same design parameters that I used for, for the, the project that we're working on now. So before we get there though, we, we are going to use the DWR grant that I mentioned in our, my last email to permit our entire 3,000-foot project. So that's the whole blue, dark blue line there. To that end, we've prepared a project description and environmental settings document for the Sequo initial study and begun meeting and scheduling meetings with our city manager and planner, the Blue Lake Rancheria and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Next, we will meet with the National Mission Marine Fisheries Service and US Fish and Wildlife Service. At the same time that we're doing that, I am adjusting the 2018 design that I had, that I with Greenway Partners had come up with. I'm reworking it to avoid some potential problem areas in particular, right here. Now, come on, get back down there. The old city dump is a, is a site that we're a little concerned about digging far, very far into. So I'm kind of moving the, the design flow line away from that a little more. And we're also sort of avoiding or, you know, moving the channel away from the, from the rancher rea corner. So that most of, well, basically all of the project will be either on city property or on Gary Johnston's property. This, this newly designed thaw wag that I'm doing right now is, is going to have a little more meandering in the city reach than I had, we had done before. And so I'm proposing and intend to propose that we protect the most vulnerable banks from erosion using boulders and woody debris. Also provides very good fish habitat. I'm also working with a hydrologist from National Marine Fisheries Service to reduce the design channel size. And this is, this is kind of an interesting one. Since we re-examined the hydraulic modeling that we had performed in 2018 and realized that the creek leaves its bank upstream of the project reach at a lower flow than we designed the design channel for. So that's up. Move that big cursor here, if I can find it. And this is, this is, this was kind of new to me. I hadn't really seen it in the original modeling that, that was done. And this is, this is, this was kind of new to me, I hadn't really seen it in the original modeling that that was done. Let's see. Yeah, okay, this moves pretty slow. Anyway, it's up, it's up here. At the upstream end of, just above the upstream end of the project. Water leaves the the channel. At something like a, maybe a ten-year flood. Whereas most of our design had been designed to handle a hundred-year flood. So. It, it, you know, I'm, we're going to. We're gonna probably try to reduce the design channel size. But I think it's important to note that. A lot of these high flows. Will leave the the channel and they head across the. The Jim Connor area. I don't know, again, if you can see my big cursor. And then they cross the. This road right in here, somewhere around there, and then I, anyway, there's, there's a low flow. A secondary low-flow channel. That flows kind of through this area and then eventually right around here, I think, comes back into the, into the creek. When, when I do finish this. This new re, you know, redesign, I will, of course, be looking to. The City Council for your advice and and approval. And I hope that that's in the next month or two. Once the design is approved by all the permitting agencies and the city. We will be preparing bid documents to select a contractor and hopefully build the fifteen hundred-foot city section. Next summer. And so that's. AutoCAD's fighting me a little bit here. Basically, it's from the top, the upstream section or. You know, that of that blue line down to. Right around, well, basically the old dump site. With that in mind, we are also working on finalizing a revegetation plan, so we can prepare an order through a native plant nursery. For hopefully replanting the excavated channel next winter. So really, that's all I had, I would have loved to, oh. Oh, now I can see all these things. Here's the Rancheria section. With water in it today. And that was pretty exciting, and in our design is gonna look very similar to that, it'll probably look very similar to that through the city. And of course, you know, you can, I don't know if you can see in this photo, but there's all kinds of plants and trees and, you know. Variety of things that that the Rancheria has been working very hard on. Ours, our section will look just like that. Let's see. Here, I'm gonna show you this one too then. This is kind of a, kind of a, you know, a cartoony cross-section of what. Basically, Powers Creek looks like right now, which is this, you know, thirty to forty, fifty-foot wide. You know, ditch. And. Eventually, once, once the, you know, once we're finished excavating. It will look more like this sixty to eighty-foot channel with. You know, real native riparian plants all over the place, so. Guess, I think that's probably. That's probably enough of the sharing. Oh, here's, actually, let me show you this one too. This was a, this was a section of creek that's right upstream of Blue Lake Boulevard. And, you know, eventually. This is what, you know, Powers Creek is gonna look like, this lower section of Powers Creek. So. Anyway, I think that's. I think that's about it. I don't know if you. If, you know, if you want to do any questions now, or if. If questions come up, feel free to. Email me, that's, that's a good way to go, and I think you all have my email address now. Guess that's all.
Thank you, thank you, Keith. Are there any questions or comments from the council at this time? Yeah, I noticed Summer was taking a lot of notes and. This is one of her fields of expertise, so I'm now.
So I, it, we haven't seen any actual design, so it'd be nice to see that have a better, in order to have a better discussion. Some first, first few things that come to mind that are of concern is. The going from a thirty-foot width to a sixty-foot width and. The areas that you you'll be taking that land in order to do so. And does your floodplain study actually warrant that? That wide of a channel based on like a hundred-year flow or even a ten-year flow? Does it need that wide of a channel?
It could use a wider channel, actually. Let me go back to the, to the map here.
That's surprising considering that they're really, this is a really small waterhead. And just thinking. When you take the additional lands and even up on the upstream area where your blue line starts behind. The, is that the brewery?
Yes.
So first, you mentioned that there's a a channel upstream of that that diverts over to the arena, so you're talking. Upstream of the berm that's to the south of the arena. So it comes through the neighborhood. Right there and the private property.
Yeah, it doesn't really divert, it just basically leaves the channel.
Right, yeah, so overflow.
Right.
Okay, and what, what gradient are you, are you proposing as far as how much are you excavating and?
The the gradient is pretty well controlled by. Basically, two hard spots, the culvert. Let's see if I can move the screen without totally messing things up. You know, the culvert right here underneath. Oh, what is this road, anyway? Right there, and then, so that, you know, that, that's a fixed elevation. And then the other fixed elevation is. The buried boulders underneath the Rancheria Bridge. There's also now the pedestrian bridge is also hardened. So anyway, so we're, we don't have any, really any flexibility in in slope. So it's a very, very low gradient stream.
So, for instance, what's the drop over a thousand feet?
I don't know, I'll have to get back to you, it's less than. Less than one percent.
So with this excavation and the planting with how far, so you had a cross-section to show basically the planting and then you had. An example picture from what occurred downstream, how far beyond the excavation of the channel are you proposing to plant?
We're not planning to to plant very much beyond the channel, at least in the city section. When we get down to Gary Johnston's property. The intent, at least my intent, has been to not armor the banks. And not, you know, not harden them as much. So that the, you know, the the creek can move around a bit and we'll be planting a little further out. From the top of the bank, but in the city section, we're very constrained, we've got the trail. On the left bank, looking downstream, and then we have. You know, three pretty concerned. Landowners on the right bank. So. That section is, is, there, there's not a lot of room to play with, like I said, you know, I think. We might have gone with a wider channel. Originally, at least in the, but, you know, that wasn't. That wasn't available to us.
Okay, and. How far off from the current thouwag are you proposing a meanders? Now, you've mentioned there's a few areas that you're proposing some additional meanders and how far off from the existing thouwag?
Let me pull up the existing thaw wag, I think that might be the easiest way to. See this.
And while you're looking for that, the other question that goes along with it is. When you're excavating, cuz you have those two controls as far as gradient, so what is the volume of excavation between or kind of on average? In a cross-section, how much are you excavating? And. With a wider channel and an increased excavation, it seems like then you're. Flattening or you're, you're increasing your capacity for flow. However, in a lower flow scenario. You're also reducing, potentially reducing the, the ability for fish passage because of the showered water.
Well, we're gonna have, we're designing a low-flow channel in there, and it'll be. At least as deep as as the creek is right now. But much narrower. Because it'll, it'll be a, just a narrow active channel, like, I don't know, you know, I think, I think I've got it about six feet wide. And about, you know, foot to two-foot deep, something like that, except in the pools where it'll be a little deeper.
Okay, so you're kind of cyan color is the existing thouwag?
The light blue, yeah, the cyan, exactly, yes, that's the existing thaw wag. That one, I I took that from the the LIDAR that was. The, the LIDAR photos that were flown. And the, and the saw, and the, the topography. There's another thaw wag that. National Marine Fisheries Service and HSU surveyed back in, I think it was two thousand and seven, which is, you know. Pretty similar, I mean, it it's moved around a little bit, but, yeah, that's the. You know, this, this light blue. Channel is. A result of, you know, the mills ditching this, you know, right up against their property line back in the. Early fifties. And it's, it's been there, this, you know, it's been there ever since then.
So the thouwag that you're proposing from the current pedestrian bridge across Powers Creek. And downstream where it starts to meander. Away from the existing thouwag on, further to the left bank and away from it. Have you considered? And so the reason I'm I'm stating this is that those meanders as a concern for. The current proposed development or potential development that the city would be doing on city property. It creates a, it means that we would have to further set back building structures. And from the the creek and right, and riparian area. So is there another way to set those meanders or? Get creative, so it's not bumping out so far? It's like, it looks like it goes right up to the trail.
It goes right up to the trail, yes. Yeah, well, you know, for example, this, this set area right in here, say, right there at the. You know, the property line, the the Zettler Man property line. It's really quite narrow, it's. It's about sixty feet. The, well, actually, you know, the, where the pedestrian bridge is, that's. That's actually the narrowest spot. And that is. That's not much. Now, let's see, it's probably about fifty-five, sixty feet there.
From top of bank to top of bank is what you mean, or?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, there's kind of a pinch point with the bridge. Okay, so do you, you hear, you understand what I'm saying, though, that the concern for pushing that meander out. Right against the existing pedestrian trail or access road is. It means we're now pushing any additional development back away even further. So it restricts the ability for the city to develop that.
Well, I don't really think that's. Quite right, because the. At least the way I understand it, the. Is it, what, this is the opportunity zone, is that what this is called now?
Yes.
Yeah, that's got a fifty-foot. Well, it's not an easement, but basically there's a setback of fifty-foot on either side of the center of the channel. Of the center of the floodway, the main channel. So the thaw wag is, can move around in there, and that's not going to affect setbacks at all. At least, that's the way I understand it.
So we have with Keith and Gary and I pretty extensively, especially originally with the original design. To make sure that city properties were not impacted, and that's been a strong position that we've taken throughout this whole design process is that. This creek, this development can't impact anymore the city's development potential of those properties. And that it definitely can't impact or cause for any type of new FEMA mapping or anything to impact those properties. So those have been restrictions that, you know, that we've identified from the very get-go. And I know Keith is very cognizant of that. And is taking that into consideration, so this new design, we just met with Keith. Last week, maybe Keith?
I think it was, I think it was two weeks ago, but may, yeah, and not, not long ago.
And that was some of our concern again, to see it starting to meander and change again, you know, that, that that constraint has to be established, like. We can't, we can't impact that.
You know, part, part of the thing that's driving this redesign is. Well, you know, the main thing really is fish habitat. The granting agency, Department of Water Resources, the guy that we're working with is. Is a big advocate of. Urban stream renewal, but also. Of making sure that. You know, we have a a fish working creek.
Can you, what is the funding source? Or the, the program with DWR that funds it, that would drive that priority?
Oh, it was the Urban Stream Restoration Program, USRP, I think.
Okay, yeah, cuz it's not a great manager, it drives that, it's the program itself that drives those priorities, so.
Well, you wouldn't know that, talking to this guy. Okay, and you're right, though.
So this is, the funding is supporting the development, stakeholder outreach, the design and the permitting process, is that what you said?
And construction.
And construction, okay.
Well, we, we originally had a design. Grant. Started in twenty seventeen and. That funded the designs, funded a lot of meetings with, well, with the city, with all of the stakeholders. And originally came up with, with, you know, the constraints that were. That we were tied into, we're actually now constraining it even a little more, because like I say, I think that, I think. I and. Well, Margaret Towser is the hydrologist that's, you know, very concerned, I think she feels like this is overdesigned. And so, you know, that's part of why. Some of. You know, we're, I'm narrowing the channel somewhat. And then. Once we had a design. That was an FRGP grant. That produced that, you know, they, we called it. that produced that, you know, they, we called it 100% design. It wasn't, but you know, they paid us for it as, as it was. Then we, we submitted that design to DWR along with a request to, or, you know, included in the proposal was fully permitting the whole thing. You know, it, it's all very, you know, I don't know, you know, grant things are, it seems like you're always juggling stuff and, and FRGP was not available when we wanted, so, you know, at the time that we submitted this grant to DWR, what we did is we decided to go ahead and, and do all the permitting ourselves, you know, under this grant. And then rather than using the, you know, the CDFW's programatics stuff, waiting for them to, you know, and so it's gonna, it's going to permit the whole thing and then construct half of, of the project. And, you know, originally I wanted, and I still wish we could, would have liked to have done the low, the downstream section first. That would have made the most sense to me, but, you know, because of DWR's rules, we had to put the whole thing out to bid, so we couldn't have Gary Johnston work on his own property without him having to, you know, come up with a low bid. And so he said, no, I don't want to do it, not under this grant, so.
Clarification, Keith, what percent are the designs currently? And so you're, and you're actually, so go ahead and answer that really quick.
I would say less than 90%.
Okay, and you're, what you're proposing with this construction funding is to implement the upstream end and not the middle section?
Correct.
That seems very problematic to me. There's just, especially when you, I mean, that, that seems like you're going to create like a backflow issue if you haven't excavated out the middle section. It's like having a plug in the middle of a straw. I don't know, it's just, that seems very backwards, but beyond that, so you're, you're saying that you'll come back in the next month or two with a with design plans and some additional information. So I think some of the questions that, that you weren't able to answer tonight because you needed to look at the plans, it would be nice to see a real clear, concise set of designs to look over and have those questions answered with some cross-sections and have a better understanding of, I know, like what you're excavating, where it's going, where, you know, how you're utilizing the city property.
Yeah, no, I, I've got a full set of design plans. You know, it's an 18 sheet set. And I, I'm sure the city has a copy or two of it in various formats. And in, you know, the 22 by 34 sheets as well as PDF, and I can certainly send that PDF version to anybody who wants it, or like I say, the city has it.
Send it to me, that would be wonderful.
So you want me to send it to each of you, or?
Yeah, yes, please.
Okay. Okay, um, yeah, no, I, I agree with you. It, it, it's not the ideal setup. It's, it's unfortunate that that, you know, well, I guess that Gary Johnston has decided that, and I, you know, I, I understand. But it is unfortunate that we can't do that section, particularly now that the rancheria has done their section. It would be
Keith, what is the plan then if Gary decides he doesn't want to allow project on his property? What would be the purpose of constructing a restoration project upstream? I mean, typically the point to a restoration project is continuity. And there, and there goes your fish passage if you have this plug in the middle.
Right.
Why are we asking taxpayers to fund this if we're, you know, essentially not able to complete a whole project?
We're gonna have to get a grant to do the rest. We've, we've applied for an FRGP grant. And I, you know, I assume we should be hearing, you know, in the next few months probably about whether that one is going to go through. And that would, that would construct the bottom, the downstream half. And, you know, if, if it all came together, I mean, theoretically, we could do both of them next summer. If, if the FRGP funding comes. But no, you, you know, all of these are, you know, legit. I, I I, I was very frustrated with the way that this, this has developed. I think it's going to be a very valuable piece, you know, for, for one thing. You know, just, just the, the riparian forest itself is going to, you know, is going to be such a huge improvement for the city, for the district, you know, for the fish, for, you know, everybody, recreation, wildlife. I don't really think that it's going to be a back, you know, backing up kind of a thing. I, I, you know, the creek is, is, you know, has a capacity to carry water right now. So I don't, I don't really, I don't, I don't see, I don't really anticipate a problem of, of things backing up if we construct this upstream section first.
I guess what I'm, I mean, this may be out of your scope here, but I'm, I'm concerned about further upstream, like through town. Behind, and next to our town square, where the concrete is, you know, not good. And where the creek goes underneath, Swatki's building, the Shell building, you know. And then, I mean, I don't know how that's going to affect what you're doing, but for immediate concern, that, that's where my, my concern is with the creek, is that particular area.
Oh, I absolutely agree. I absolutely agree. You know, that's much, that's a real mess up there, you know, where it's, where it's based.
I guess my question is more towards demanding, have we?
Oh, yeah, it's absolutely something that we've been looking at. I mean, that was part of the emphasis, impetus for getting the town square was being able to get site control so that we could look at making those changes. So as we've been looking at the town square design, that's been factored in as, you know, when we look at where we would put improvements, knowing that we might have to bench that back, take out that concrete. But now that we have, you know, Delarte has purchased a portion, the other portion from Joe. The city has site control. We're in a much better position to make that application for funding. Private individuals, you know, that's just, you know, not something that they would be able to really take on. But as a city, you know, we have that capacity to do that. So we've, we've been looking at that. Our engineers have been looking at it. We've looked at it with matter of reliance. But yeah, it's definitely a, a concern that we have as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I've, I've been advocating, you know, basically taking the, the design cross-section that we've got here and applying it up there. I mean, you know, tear those, those concrete banks out and open it up and, but, you know, it's, it's not my decision.
Well, I mean, we're just having to piece this project together. There's not enough money to do it all at once. And so, you know, as, I think the exciting thing is though, is that Powers Creek is getting some real good looks at it, it's getting some solid funding thrown at it, and it's actually being recognized as having habitat potential. So we're starting to really build those partnerships and there's, you know, this is a $600 and some thousand dollar project on city property. So it's pretty exciting that we're going to start seeing this creek turn back into a much more natural habitat than what it currently is. So I think we're making good progress. We're, we're definitely having to kind of piece a little bit here, piece a little bit there. But, you know, that's how projects happen and, you know, when you're looking at a large scope, you know, you don't often get, you know, the whole thing funded. And what happened with Gary's, you know, project was more a result of a contracting issue and not an issue of whether he wants to be the project or not. So there were some issues with, you know, he thought he was going, he was written into the grant as a contractor. Then it came out that this grant doesn't allow that. The, the FRGP I think that you wrote for does allow you though, to write him in as a contractor. So I think it'll all resolve itself.
Okay, my, I mean, my concern is if I, if I was to look at Powers Creek, magical Powers Creek as a former city council person used to call, Dave Powers Creek. I mean, I see the real need is that particular area behind Delarte and next to our town square. I mean, I, I feel like we can live with this, the, the way it's existing. I feel like if we were really going to do any piece, that should be the priority. But I'm not a riparian person, so, I mean, I'm just a person that is looking at the, the creek going, well, this concerns me so much and that not so much.
Well, I think, you know, we had to start out looking at whether fish could even get up the creek. So there was the initial look at the barrier. So there was a, a very intensive barrier down towards the mouth that had to be dealt with. You know, and then as fish are coming up, you know, they're gonna, they have to get past this section to even get further up the creek. The creek starts to look a lot more natural as it moves up and especially as you get up towards the boulevard. There's some really beautiful holes up there and some really, really nice segments. You know, and then when you're moving through the town, there's, there's a lot to be looked at when it comes to the town. You've got private property, you've got infrastructure, you've got buildings, you've got road systems. I mean, it's, that section alone is, it's, it's got a lot that has to be evaluated and I'm not quite sure, you know, I don't really know how that one comes into play at what point, if it starts to become like a failure issue. And we start looking at that versus, you know, a habitat or we're looking at just that being a spot for fish to run through to get up to the next spot that's a little bit more pristine, you know, so I don't know, there's, there's gonna be a lot that, you know, you have to look at intercality. But I imagine that's going to be a, a pretty big project. You know, you've got buildings built all the way up to the sides of the channel. You got buildings over the top of the channel, so, yeah, it's, it'll be interesting.
You know, as, as we're talking about this in a more general scope here, I know Michelle Fuller applied for a Powers Creek watershed plan years, you're, you know, 12, 15 years ago, something like that. And she didn't get it funded. I think that is, that definitely should, should perhaps be a step before this one, but unfortunately, you know, this is, well, it's not unfortunate. I'm, I, I'm excited about this. I'm really excited about this. I, I think it's going to be a, a, you know, a great improvement for fish. We do have fish in the creek. But, you know, I mean, there's Blue Lake, the lake itself.
Yeah, there's that too.
I mean, you know, that's, these are all things that, you know, have been swimming around in mine and many others' heads for years and years. You know, getting the water, all of the water that the city has the right to down into the creek, you know. City has water rights up on the, you know, in the upper watershed that, you know, is, are not being, you know, the water's not being released into Powers Creek. There's, you know, there's a lot of issues with, with Powers Creek.
Okay, well, I, I realize that I opened up a kind of a can of worms and I didn't mean to, it's just that that as a layperson, I just look at the creek and that sticks out to me, but I understand it. Yeah, I, I agree with Summer. We, I'd like to see more of a plan. Definitely before we make decisions about it, and particularly since we're looking at that opportunity zone. And we've already had issues with shading and that kind of thing, how that's going to play into our development of that, that property. So anyway, thank you very much, Keith. Are there any other questions from council about this issue? It sounds like in another month. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Keith. Are there any questions from public at all that is are weighing in? I can't see how many participants we have. Okay, all right. Well, this was simply an information item at this point. It doesn't look like we're making any, taking any action on it, so we'll move on then to our next item on the agenda, which is the sanitary sewer study fund allocation. We need to consider authorizing the city manager to expend funds in the amount of $65,000 dollars from the sewer capital reserve fund to conduct the sanitary sewer assessment. Funds may be eligible for reimbursement through a pending grant application and action.
Yeah, so the city has a, a fairly substantial problem with infiltrate, water infiltration into our wastewater system. So, you know, we've been talking for years about being concerned about our capacity to take on more wastewater connections. Part of our limitation is the fact that we do have this INI problem. So when we get large-scale rain events, our wastewater treatment plant captures a lot of additional rate, it's basically rainwater, but it's coming through our sanitary system. And it skews our capacity by quite a bit. And in order to, we've written for a grant to do a large-scale study that could then get us to the point where we could apply for funding to, you know, fix some of the problem areas. But in order to do, to do this, we really need to study the system at the high-flow times, which is now. If we don't do it now, we have to wait another year, which puts us another year behind in our funding cycle. So we put in a grant, it's a fairly substantial grant that we've put in for, and this study is actually covered under the grant. The grant's pending, it's been reviewed, it's going through the process, I believe, that we're being funded. And this would be a reimbursable expense. In the event that it's not a reimbursable expense, though, it is a critical component of getting a better handle on our system so that we can make the necessary improvements. And also establish really what is our baseline capacity and with, what can we do to mitigate some of those impacts? And, all right, when you guys look at it there. Yeah, so, so we're asking for authorization to expend some funds out of the capital reserve. If you look in your financials and your balance sheet, we do have a very sizable reserve. Even though it looks like a lot of money, though, you know, wastewater is really, really incredibly expensive. And so when we look at that balance, we're looking at that is more of an opportunity to leverage other resources in the future and not so much the, being able to fix all of our problems with that. So, you know, it's, the, the capital reserve fund can handle the expenditure. Because I believe we will be getting it reimbursed as well, but it's kind of a timing issue to be able to study the high flow then.
Does the grant specifically say that they can reimburse outside the grant?
They did, yeah, yes.
Do you have that in writing?
Yeah. Yeah, so we verified, and Chuck Swanson verified with the funding agency that because we, we're taking this on as part of it was written into the grant as a reimbursement request, that it is, it is a reimbursable expense if it gets funded. Which I do believe, like I said, I do believe that we will be getting funding for it.
Okay, are there any questions, questions or comments from the council? Any questions from public concerning this item? All right, back to council, looks like our action is to authorize the city manager to spend up to 65,000 from the sewer capital reserve fund to conduct a study and add this project to SH's existing contract for services. Motion made by Chris Kiran, second by Benjamin McCray, to authorize the manager to extend the funds. Any further discussion?
Okay, thanks, Summer. So is there any further discussion on the motion from council? Any further discussion or interest from public? Okay, back to council for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes.
It passes. City Blue Lake Small Business Grant Program authorized the city manager to finalize the city's small business grant program policy. And proceed with a funding allocation recommendation for council approval at the next council meeting. And this is a discussion and or action item.
Yeah, so this is, um, part of the, um. American Rescue. Oh gosh, our plan, our plan fund. Project and you guys had budgeted fifty thousand dollars out of that allocation to go towards helping our small businesses. Um, this is a great, great project and, um, Emily, Emily is on here. Emily's been doing a lot of outreach with the businesses, um, she's met with all the businesses, she's done a survey. Um, she's asked them to complete an application, um, she's done the background research on the guidelines. Uh, one of the things that makes it very simple for us is that we are technically a disadvantaged community, so. Basically, any business in the city then qualifies and you really don't even have to go through. It's like if you, if you are disadvantaged, just go, you, you know, you don't have to, uh, go through anything more to establish your, um. Eligibility, so, so that makes it very easy, um, we, we kind of started out with a, um. Some parameters of, you know, tell us what could help you, um, with your current situation, how could this funding help you? Uh, either transition your operation or, you know, make, you know, your, your business successful or buy some equipment. Or could it help with, you know, some expenses that you've had, um. So, and we, we put it in kind of a between five hundred and five thousand dollars, because we figured we probably had between. Ten to twelve businesses that would be interested and, you know, trying to, you know. We, we didn't want to make it so, such a small amount that it wasn't really beneficial, but also giving it everyone a shot to get a little bit of something that could be really helpful, so. Five thousand seemed like something that could really help, you know, these little businesses, um, and we really worked hard to. Uh, work with the businesses to help them over some hurdles, whether that's with. Uh, you know, marketing or signage or a piece of equipment that could help them expand their business, um. You know, beautification, you know, trying to kind of use it to enhance their, their retail presence, so. Which in turn helps the city, because the more business we have, the more retail sales tax we generate, and you know, it's very reciprocal. Um, so it's, um, we've had a lot of great feedback, we've had, you know, people have. Applied for things like, um. We had one business that has a delivery business and her delivery vehicle broke down right in the middle, you know, and she had. A very substantial expense associated with it, but the only way to keep her business going, because she had to close her storefront, was to do deliveries. And so, you know, this was like super timely, could help pay for some of those expenses, and now she's looking at opening a storefront in Blue Lake as well. So that's exciting, um, one of the businesses has looked at adding a piece of equipment that would allow them to offer, um. Different types of drinks, um, at their business, so to kind of increase the, the offerings that they have to their clientele. Um, we've had people ask for funding to cover some of the more basic like rent, um, expenses. You know, as people had to shut down, they still had to pay rent on their businesses and their, their places, and that was really, you know, really hard for people, so. Um, the, we've also. Looked at, um, the Parks and Recreation Program applying as well, because, uh, cities are also eligible for those programs. Because they've recognized that parks really took on a higher burden during COVID, where people really. Parks had to really transition themselves and become places for business as well, so, you know, when, um. Uh, cities had to open their parking lots to become outdoor restaurants or, you know, designate parking spaces or tables. Or, you know, just kind of transition their own public spaces to help businesses really get past this, so, um. We've looked at the park applying as well for two, two businesses to kind of reinvent, um, you know, our parks all got shut down, so we lost all the revenue. Um, and so we're trying to kind of reinvent ourselves a bit as we reopen. Uh, one of the businesses that we'd like to include in our offering at Crash Hall along with skating is. Um, a heat press business where we would do custom shirts and things that would be associated with like. You know, you could get your own skating t-shirts and hats and have your name put on it, um, we can also sell those for softball. Um, there's kind of a big market for it and it's a very low entry point and it's a very, um. Low skill point, so it's, you know, something that, you know, you get the logo, you. Say you want your shirt and you press it on and you put your name on the back and, you know, you take a seven dollar shirt and you turn around sell for twenty-five, you know, so it's a. Pretty high markup, uh, but it's just another offering that, that the park could have on a bunch of different levels. We're also going to be opening kind of a novelty shop along with skating, you know, all those. Kind of trinket things that kids love, you know, when you go to laser tag or Chuck E. Cheese and. You know, it costs your mom twenty dollars for you to get the fifty cent bouncy ball or whatever, but they drive revenue. Um, it's what the kids want, you know, and we just haven't ever really got to that level. Uh, we're also looking at putting a little bit more revenue or resources into our serving booth to get it to that level that it can be a commercial facility. Um, and that's a really good diversification and it's supported by the COVID relief fund, so. Um, at this point, Emily's drafted some draft guidelines, um. And we're a little bit over our fifty thousand dollar, um, allocation, and so we want to work with the businesses to. See if everyone can kind of rack it down a little bit, including the city, um, and get us to our budget, and then we'd like to be able to bring back that to council for final approval. I don't know if you guys have any questions, Emily's also here, she's been, um, she's been doing a great job pulling all this together, she's. She's very techy, so she, you know, she's like, oh yeah, I got like a Google box and I turned it into a survey and then I already sent it out and I bought them, you know, it's like, oh. Perfect, because I would have been like printing it and maybe taking it around to people, so.
Is there, in, in the survey that was sent out, was there a, a common theme or something that stuck out?
Um, you know, not necessarily, I think everyone kind of looked at it a little differently. Um, you know, there are some businesses that were hit harder than others, um, just be the type of business that they are, you know, really kind of. Um, you know, kind of set them on a specific path. Um, some of the ones that, you know, weren't as more like customer facing, really needed more assistance with like rent. Um, we've had some people though that, um, like Blackberry Bramble, Al has applied and he wants to redo his website. Because he's gotta reinvent himself a bit too, you know, so that marketing campaign to emerge from this and let, well, know like. Hey, like, I'm here, here's what I have to offer, so, uh, one of the things that Emily and I talked about was maybe. Working with Humboldt Made to do a Blue Lake Made website, and so instead of doing these individual websites, maybe we could do a collective website. That would highlight all of the Blue Lake businesses and their offerings, allowing them still to have their own. Kind of front, but then kind of brand it together like Humboldt Made did and help provide a little more support too. You know, websites are really expensive, but if you could have a collective site where they have more just, you know, a page. The cost entry point is less and it also makes Blue Lake look, you know, like we have more to offer. And Humboldt Made was really successful and, you know, and really helping kind of, you know, set this kind of like. Front and base for small businesses when they didn't really have the capacity to do it themselves. So we've been talking about that, um, Emily's had conversations with, um, Alana Powell at, um. Which I guess now it's. Yeah, I can't remember what they've called themselves now, but, you know, they're gonna, they're really interested in doing Sunday markets with us. Um, on the same levels of Friday night markets, um, they called us last week and said, you know, we've been talking about it, we're watching Blue Lake. Guys are getting a lot of like talk and, you know, excitement, and we think we could do a Sunday market with you guys. Kind of on, you know, be a lower, you know, level, but, you know, kind of started there, so. Um, so we're kind of building that relationship as well, so. Yeah.
There's, um, businesses such as I'm thinking of Artie Skeeter's, uh, Chumay's Spa.
Yeah, and we're working with Artie.
Yeah, because I was wondering if, if they can, um, use funds for those, um. Clean, um, their, their pure, uh, purifiers, air purifiers that can be put in. I know a lot of the classrooms are using them now in schools. And I know with his business, it would be really difficult to continue if he doesn't have something like that. And with, you know, plenty of masks and some other things that are just, you know, really. Sort of hands-on things.
Yeah, and we've been, uh, we've been having some great conversations with Artie, because I think his, his business is so critical and that building is so. Frontal, um, and I, I'm really like working on to let us get another business in there, um, because the front. Two doors, the, the limitation is ADA accessibility, so we're looking at a sidewalk project where we could bump that out. Sort of what we did over at the coffee shop, because, you know, it's, it's a, it's not a good. Um, transition point anyways for pedestrians and then it doesn't have ADA accessibility into that building, so. We could fix that, it would be a beautification project as well, because we could kind of bump it out and landscape it and do the, that little parklet. In the same way, also getting him, um, to the point where he has ADA access, which makes that front. Able to operate as a second business versus, you know, uh, the same as a spa, because you'd have to go into the other side access. And he's been really supportive of that, and we've actually have a couple of businesses, one of them is, um. The florist on Tarten, she had arcade of florists, she had a shutdown during COVID, you know, so she's been operating everything out of her garage. But she really wants to reopen her storefront, but she's like, you know, I'd rather just do it in Blue Lake, because I don't. You know, her sales weren't really driven so much by people coming off the street as they were the deliveries and stuff, but. It's a nice storefront as well, and it would be a beautiful addition to Artie's to have a pretty like flower display out. Um, you know, she could maybe carry some other stuff, but she's behind the scenes doing her bouquets and, you know, and stuff for delivery, so. Uh, he's been, he's been really, um, excited to be working with the city, he put in an application more for like beautification stuff. Um, maybe some outdoor seating, some, uh, landscaping items, and. So, yeah, so we've been working really closely with them to, to get them to the point where they can reopen and also take the next step to maybe add a second business there.
So we won't get the final list, you mentioned just a couple people, but we won't get a final list till January?
Yeah, uh, we're still kind of working with people and synthesizing some of their applications, um, you know, it. We don't want to drag it out either, people really need the resources, and this is a hard time of year especially, so. Um, you know, even dragging it out to January, but it will, it'll be here before we know it and try to just, I want to make sure that everything is very. Um, concise and well put together, because we'll get audited on this as well, so I need to make sure that. You know, is there a grant agreement, is there a contract, you know, what do we need them to present, and we can't just like. Give them, you know, a check for five thousand dollars and be like, I don't know what they did with it, so we just need to know. Um, kind of how, what that backend looks like too, so that we're, we've done everything that we need to do.
So you'll make kind of a template.
We will, yeah.
Application will look like.
Yeah. Right, so there'll be an agreement for use of funds, um, like, yeah. And luckily, you know, it's, there's not that many, so we'll be able to work really closely with everyone.
All right, so our recommended action, um. Is to authorize the city manager to finalize the program's guidelines. It sounds like some of the things we've been talking about with the. Application, develop the allocation agreement and bring back the council's authorization, file grant disbursement. Recommendation, so that you can have that done by our next meeting, oh, that would be great, yeah, I know, especially since it's time of year.
It's hard, yeah, and people are really having to, this is a critical time too to plan for spring and summer, so, you know, it won't be long before they're. Starting to take, you know, that next step to open their doors or more people are coming and stuff, so we want to, you know, not get in their way of. Um, you know, using the resources. Emily, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, I just wanted to add, I've been adding, uh, the project descriptions and more information about the small business program on our economic development website. Um, if you guys would like to read more about it, uh, the businesses have been. Very, very responsive and, um, excited about this program, and I thank you guys for your continued support with moving this forward. And helping these businesses.
Thanks for your work, yeah.
Thank you.
But if you glitches on the council agenda site, if you saw it, it did not, nothing lined up. We can't figure out why it did that, but all of the rest of the stuff she's doing is looking great.
I would move to the recommended action. Okay, it's been moved by Summer Durney, second by Chris Kiran, to authorize the city manager. She moved forward on this, and is there any further discussion from council? Anything from public? I think it's time to say something.
Oh, oh, hi Leah, you're on mute, oh, there you go.
Okay, I unmuted myself.
Thank you.
Hi, you guys, this. This is Leah from Abundance Upcycle Boutique, and I just wanted to, I sat in today specifically. To advocate for our business, um. My experience has been a little different than what I heard, um, I just recently met Emily when I got, um. Some lights for, for Christmas lights, but, um. I did submit an application, I didn't understand that it could be used for, um, operating costs. Um, but I'm just, November was, um, you may or may not understand, our business is one of the only ones in the downtown. Footprint that's open to the public on a, like, fairly daily basis. And we opened right before the COVID and we have been. Just squeaking by and we have our own extra jobs, but we're trying to keep, um. Like alive in the COVID and, um. I, I don't feel like I've totally gotten very good communication with the city. Or the city council around this grant, um, but I really want to be considered. Because November was the first time where we were in the red in a way, it was very obvious when the mask mandate was, was not. Um, in place that the business was being successful, and then as soon as it was in place again. Um, just as far as the state mandate, when it changed back again, that it really was difficult for our business. And I stay really positive trying to keep the doors open, I really relate to what the woman was saying with, um. You know, zero waste Humboldt, that a big part of what we're doing in the community is trying to keep things like alive and we're trying to have a little. Market, the kids can come by and, um, people ask every day to use our bathroom and we. Can't because we're not ADA compliant, but like we are a community center being right in the downtown area. And, um, I just don't want to be overlooked for the small business grant and I. Somehow feel like, um, I'm not totally sure, um. How to like advocate for the importance of like support for our business.
So Leah, I think there's some misunderstanding, your, you, your application was accepted and. Uh, I, I did let you know that several times that you, that you're in the list for funding, so. I don't, there, I, I don't think you're, we're not asking people, we're not like cutting people out or asking people to. Um, we're not asking to fund one over the other at this point, so. Um, you guys are definitely on the list, you, you have your application in. Um, so I, I don't want you to feel that, um, there's, there's anything more at this point, so.
We have to get through this.
I, when, when I talked with Emily, she did encourage me to come to this meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for joining us. Yes, I think this is one of the hoops that we have to draw through, jump, jump through as far as. The process, it has to go through the council for authorization and then, um, you know, we, we will. We will be moving forward, sounds like the next meeting. We'll, we'll find, the money will go out. Unfortunately, government does not work as fast as we would love it to.
Well, I'm always open to communication, because I'm like right downtown and easy to find, so. I'm, yeah, communication helps.
We really love your business.
Thank you, thank you, it's good to see you guys, thank you.
All right, um. Back to council then for the vote on the recommended action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. All right. All right, we're on, uh, number eleven, RV Park Campground Contract Recognition. Yeah, authorize the city manager to negotiate their school contract with the top ranked firm to conduct the campground, RV. Our business analysis work to identify funding award, and this is the discussion and action item as well.
Yeah, so this is the, um, the RV parking. Yeah, so this is the um the RV parking campground um project that we received funding for through. I'm sorry, I had these on the copier, then when I came in to set up and saw all of the commodities, I. So the city's not up to bid for um services or actually qualification based. So it's called an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, and we were looking for a um a team and not just. A single entity to uh. Put together a uh an analysis and recommendation. Okay. Uh for the. Basically, what we're looking to do is to analyze um the potential for an RV parking campground along with support to business amenities. Um which could be, you know, a gas station, um a recreation shop, a grocery store. Um that would be support um businesses if an RV parking campground were to be developed in the community. Um the project also is asking for a specific site analysis um based upon the recommended site. Uh which could include engineering, environmental, preliminary environmental work, design work, architectural work. Um visioning, beaming. And a pro forma development and basically an overall development plan. So the end product that we would like to see is basically a project that we could take out. Um for funding and investment, let's see if we could um attract an investor for this project. So we recently, we put it out the first time, and then we were kind of right in the middle of covid, and. Um the recreation industry got hit especially hard during covid. Um a lot of, you know, campground shutdown, businesses shut down, um rep people in this industry really. Had to, you know, um. Kind of transform themselves and kind of just survive through covid. Um this last recreation season, though, was really good, and. RV sales are through the roof, and they're expected to continue to be that way for a number of years, and. So we put the proposal back out again, and we received um. We received a number of inquiries, um and we went. We went national and global with this RFQ, because we didn't want to limit ourselves um to. Just kind of a local scope, because we felt like. Uh this type of development is something that has to have a a regional, national, and international. Um kind of draw, because that's the kind of tourists that we're seeing, that we do see in our region. Um so we, we had several um. People put in proposals, some of them were incomplete, because they were only proposing for specific aspects. Um to be considered, so their intent was, you know, hey, if you, if you get someone that needs someone who could do business performers, you know. I'm gonna give you my, you know, um my qualifications, we had a couple of those, and then we had two groups that were. A little, we had one group that was. A little bit on the edge of being a qualified proposer, didn't quite have all of the things that we asked for. But we evaluated them anyways, and then we had two that were um that were very well qualified. We had Storyland Studios, and we had um. Uh ODG Outdoor Design Group. And those were our two top ranked firms, um Emily and Trevor and I took a first run at evaluating them. That they had evaluation criteria in the RFQ, um so we went through and evaluated their strengths and weaknesses based upon our rating schedule. Um and then we also provided this to um the EDC to look at, and uh Darcy. Lima and Cher Spoman both um participated in reviewing. And basically, they were um, they were both very qualified, um but. Storyland seemed to have a little bit something that we felt was really critical to um Blue Lake. Not that um that ODG couldn't do a really good job, but we felt that Storyland had. The capacity to set a vision, um and that's something I feel like we're really, really lacking right now in the Powers Creek District. And I actually got a little bit, I was a little taken aback by them at first, because they felt very. Like theme parkish, you know, they're very Disney Pixar, Legoland oriented, they've done some really big projects. They all come out of kind of the Disney background, um so they're very heavy in beaming and animation and design. And at first I was like, oh gosh, I don't know, you know, I think of themes, and I think of like, you know, like Buzz Lightyear and, you know. But then I started thinking, you know, a theme can also be, you know, nature and, you know, um. A theming is also architecture, and it's colors, and it's, you know, landscaping, and it's signage. And, you know, those are all the things that we're really lacking in the Powers Creek District, and they're all the things that the community has really been asking for. I hear over, what's it gonna look like, when do we get to decide what it's gonna look like, and. Honestly, when I look at the Powers Creek District, I have no idea, I mean, it is such a hot pot right now of different types of. Uses and building types, and I, in my mind, I think of like industrial modern, but like, really, what is that? And so it's an opportunity, I kind of started, when, you know, gosh, these guys might be the ones that could. Really bring the community in and kind of help us on a couple of different levels, they're highly qualified to do. An RV parking campground, they have all the background to do, you know, the the performers, they have the team that can do that. But I started to get a little bit more excited about the fact that they might be able to just help us with the marketing of the whole thing with. You know, how does affordable housing work into this, you know, how does the small businesses work in, how does the recreation work in, where does the creek come into play? And how does that all start to work together, so the more we talked about it, the more excited we, you know, we got. Um about that opportunity, because I feel like there's not really anyone local. That I know that can help us through that process, um you know.
I'm all from Southern California.
They probably are.
Where they're from.
Yeah, I mean, they've done work all over, you know, they were. Yeah, I mean, they um they've done stuff all internationally, so. Um but I I they did also do a lot of outreach to us, you know, they talked with Emily a lot, they asked a lot of questions. Um they. They didn't come, I don't think they actually came out here, but they um. You know, they pulled up a lot of stuff on Blue Lake, they did the Google Earth stuff, they, you know, they had a whole list of questions for us, you know, like, what are you really trying to get to? I feel like they took a lot of time, um and it may, I think people are kind of hungry for work right now too, you know, I think. This type of development is like, you know, with covid, people really had to shrink it on themselves, and people are just starting to like. Reemerge, and so this industry is starting to reemerge, so I think they're a little hungry for work as well. Um but it's, you know, the, like I said, the more we talked about it, that element, you know, on all things. Being equal, you know, they they definitely can do the work, um ODG could do, I think, a fabulous job as well. Um but they were a little bit more heavy on the landscaping feature, they're more of a landscape design group, than they really are kind of a. Um like an overall development, I felt like they kind of lost a little bit in. You know, kind of the support businesses and how does the community connect with this versus what Storyland was proposing.
And we're looking at the power, the blue light power.
Well, yeah, I mean, ultimately, that's, I mean, that's really the focus, but we didn't limit this when we put the RFQ out, we. We kind of identified all of the open land spaces and said, you know, here are some options that you could look at, maybe. Maybe there's something that would be better, um you know, it's kind of hard to to. Specifically identify something when you have a current tenant, so. Careful about that.
Right.
Uh even though it seems like that relationship is somewhat coming to a close at this point.
It's twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, and we're, you know, we'll be giving you guys an update here um soon to probably through a closed session, I'm just satisfied, so. You know, kind of what what their operational status looks like.
What month is it in twenty twenty-five?
I think it's December.
So the, at the end of the year.
Development Administration Funding, how much was that?
Two hundred and. It was two twenty-six, and then we have a fifty thousand dollar match, so it's like two seventy-six total.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then were both of these within that?
Yeah, they're actually, both of them are were well below.
Okay.
Our budget, so that I was kind of like, oh, in fact, there's a lot of room to add. And there may be some things that people missed too, just not really understanding the scope, um and that happens a lot, you know, you. You kind of go through and you go, hey, you're the most qualified, let's sit down and really talk about and scope of work and see. You know, what we might need a little more of, um and then, you know, if you can't then negotiate a price, you move on to the next one. Um so I would, you know, want that opportunity to sit down and talk with whoever you guys direct us to go with, I mean, ultimately, it's, you know, it's your decision. That we would then sit down and kind of synthesize a scope of work, and we might be able to to be a little bit more heavy, because I think it's important. That we do have a theme, you know, and like I said, not like a Disney theme, but. RV parks are an adventure, you know, people are looking to go to them, because it is, it is an adventure, you know, and whether that's glamping. Or, you know, you want to have a place that has, you know, a water park, or, you know, but there are, there is a lot. That goes into thinking about what your visitors' expectations are and how they relate to your space, so. In that way, it really is a theme park in a lot of ways.
I think we should capitalize more on the fact that it's more of a nature.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Reserved in that, we have the river right there, we have a trail around town, we have a historic.
Yeah.
Town that you could could visit, and outline areas that you could also.
Right.
Visit if you want to make this your home base.
Yeah, absolutely, I think we're just, I don't have the expertise to get us to that level.
Yeah.
Um and like I said, I don't think there's anyone locally, I, in, when I worked for the Europe tribe, I worked with a firm out of Las Vegas. And they're probably the only ones that have ever, you know, risen to that level, and they used a lot of animation. Um but what it allowed us to do was to really, like, experience the site um through animation and be like. Oh wait, that doesn't work, or ooh, that, you know, I like that, and they they had the ability through their architectural program into like. Well, here, let me move this wall, we'll pop this up, and yet they, the signage was in, I mean, it was just amazing, like what they could do, but. It, and they were one of the most efficient and um. Financially feasible firms to go with, because they were so fast, you know, it's like something that would take a normal architect. Several meetings for you to like make a decision, because I could experience it like right there, and they could change the colors, and they could change the signage. Like it, like in minutes, it was like, boom, we could just make decisions, so. It really took it to a whole new level, and I think that's what someone like this would be able to do. Is to help people see what it could be. Um because everyone's got an idea, but I don't think anyone really has a, you know, a real synthesized idea either. You know, is it an old mill district? Well, the mill was only since the fifties, I'm trying to find out, that old, you know, do then. Go back even further than that, when it was, well, the river was coming through there at that point, you know, so. I don't know, we're pretty eclectic out here, so.
Right, so speaking of ideas. Can you, we backtrack to a little bit and remind uh just kind of a pressure of. Didn't we do like a best use analysis for the area that I did, that identified?
No, we didn't. No, no, so we had a prior grant um that was kind of the starting point of it. Um that was, and that Warren Cooley actually did that.
Right.
So it was, yeah, it was more of a, we kind of. We kind of built it as a highest and best use, but it was more of like, what's the city's next best step? Um like, what should we do next to help try and transition the economy, and and Warren looked at. Um you know, food businesses, he said, you've got to have more food out here, you've got to have places for people to. Get some food and have something to drink, that way they can stay longer, um the town square, he said, you know, you need a public bathroom. Um you know, eventually, something you should look at is the campground and RV park, and so he did a little bit of a preliminary analysis on that. And so we used that with EDA to show them that, you know, we we've been kind of moving in a progressive pathway. As we're transitioning our economy, and we, this grant was actually for um through the Disaster Recovery Fund. And basically, what we said was, you know, we've been a very industry-centric community, and we've been impacted by so many natural disasters. That industry just isn't feasible, you know, the two ninety-nine isn't accessible all the time, there's. The cost to get here is too high for for products, there's no timber, there's no railway, the fishing industry is, you know, gone, so. Our next best thing to, you know, really go on to is recreation, and so that's why they funded us, so that we can look at transitioning us. Ourselves out of an industry-specific economy into a recreation one.
Right, so is there, I'm just thinking, you know, that, so that was like the only best use for that area, and there weren't any other options to look at. Or can we incorporate in this, you know, not only the campground RV, but maybe.
Absolutely, we did, and so when we wrote the proposal, we said that, so we have, we said, you know, we want to focus on. We think an RV parking campground is something that could be feasible for us. But tell us what also could be feasible, so, you know, if you're looking at the Blake Power site, that's twenty acres, you don't need all twenty acres. For an RV parking campground, you could do, you could do a baseball stadium in it and still have space and an RV park, you could do. You know, um an event center, you could do a soccer field, a pool, like all, so we said, you know, what are some of the other things that could go along with it? Which could include more businesses, you know, there's a um, we've been kind of modeling our thought process after this. Um it's called Highway West Vacations, and they're a group that does these upscale RV parks, and they do a lot of glamping, so they have like the vintage. Um airstream trailers, and they have the cute little cabins, and each one of them is themed in a different way. So like one of them's in Palm Desert, so it's got kind of, you know, like the rocks and the stucco, and you know, it's, it's really themed that way.
Yeah.
And they have one that, you know, has the glamper campers, and it's got a brewery on site that can also be a um like a. A rental facility, so for weddings or family reunion, so we said, you know, we also need the RV park to be three hundred sixty-five days a year. So how do we capture like people traveling through, or people who want, have an Airbnb style, you know, and not, maybe don't have a camper, but would stay in the. You know, an upscale little cabin or a yurt, so, so all of those were put in um the proposal, because we're just not, I don't know. I mean, I have an idea, but.
And I get this like image of, I just like see every person. Like, here's our our mixed-use, beautiful residential, commercial, and then you've got those.
Yeah, I would say, look at Highway West Vacations, uh it's, they've done an amazing job. Um these guys actually were recommended to us by um. Called Cal Camp, I think, and they're kind of like the Chamber of Commerce for outdoor. Um like RV parks and campgrounds and everything, and they have, they run a website for um. I think they do bookings and stuff too, but Storyland did a project for Lake Elsinore, um and it's called The Launch Point, and so they took. Kind of an old city site and retool, they're right on Lake Elsinore, so they um. They created this new site for them, and it's a phased approach. Um but it's, it's really been transformative, and we did talk with Lake Elsinore about the, or the city of Elsinore about the project, and. They had great things to say just about how it's really changed the focus of their community to really embrace recreation, you know. And seeing people coming in and how it was landscaped nicely and um. And you know, RV parks are really fun, you know, I started like sleeping in the tent, and now I'm like, I can't do it anymore, so I have a little. Pop-out camper trailer, and I'll tell you what, it's like, it's so nice to go home and like, or go back to your camper and sleep on a nice mattress. And have heat, and like, you still feel like you're camping, but, you know, you can like, it's very social, and. But then they're very quiet, you know, by ten o'clock, everyone's asleep, lights are out, generators are off, and it's really kind of a fun atmosphere too, so.
That's, okay, so that's the other thing, no generators.
Oh, no, no generators.
Yeah.
Or there's a time when there.
Yeah, you would want, you have that.
For those people like me that are early to bed, so it's like.
Yeah.
Well, I think the the recommendation sounds, sounds good, I mean, I don't think we're gonna have. I mean, some people think it looks like we did have this land there, but that was.
I know, and people have said that, like, you should use that, it should be like, I'm like, it's like a scary.
So are you recommending that um we authorize?
With, we've recommended Storyland, and you know, I do, you know, before we would go any further, though, we do really want. With, we've recommended Storyland and, you know, I do, you know, before we would go any further though, we do really want to talk with them. And let them know, like, you know, we have this concern, like, you're a little beanie, like, can you? Can you transition that though? I mean, does that, you go beyond that? Cause I know Cher has a real concern with that, you know, it's built, but she said it felt gimmicky. And I had the same, you know, gut reaction at first, but like I said, then the more we got into it and started seeing. The experiences that they're creating, I was like, oh, that is a theme, you know. Everything's about some kind of theme, otherwise we have what we have down there, which is.
So you're asking for more of an open ended authorized city management negotiating contract.
And and I might add to that, you know, when looking at them, they have Alliance Redwoods, which I thought they were a little thematic as well. Uh until I did a little digging into what they're organized, like they can actually offer different things too, so. Um my my first uh click on the page was Legoland. I was like, uh, you know, I come from uh, you know, North Idaho fishing and, you know, biking, backcountry type stuff. And I look around this area and when I visit here, I think Recreation Economies. Um so maybe check out the Alliance Redwoods as well, you know, it it's a good resource, it's it's another project they've done. And I think it's worth a a few seconds to just take a poke at.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I was kind of excited that someone of this caliber was really interested in Blue Lake.
Yeah.
So that's, I think we're, you know, as we're putting ourselves out there, people are really starting to recognize our value too, which is exciting. You know, the state, you know, we got the town square square grant, they said the same thing, they said, we're watching you guys, like. You know, it's really great to see what you're doing and, you know, you are becoming a noticeable community. Cause you are putting this focus on recreation and bike parks and trails and you bought the Indian Mary and, you know, so I think, you know, it's um. I think we're starting to, you know, kind of build ourselves up a bit in that arena, so it, you know. People who come from Pixar and Disneyland and, you know, interested in a little blue lake.
Well, and if they're truly experienced, they'll be able to ratchet up, ratchet down and meet our needs.
Right.
Like a big firm with lots of experience will be able to recognize that we don't want something super gimmicky, a little, oh, this is more you're looking for.
Right.
And if they can't do it, then we'll go.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. You know, and like I said, they put a lot of effort into it, they they made a lot of calls, they sent a lot of questions, they, you know, they really want the job. They emailed the other day, it was like, they're just checking in, you know, like, we're really excited about that project, you know, it seems like. You know, something really exciting to see you guys moving in a different direction and, you know, we want to be a part of it, so.
No, the whole except they've done is very reassuring, it's like, oh, look, keep a little community, we can go put a thing in.
Right, right, yeah, and they were well beyond, well below our budget, which I was even more excited. So I was like, and there might be things that they left out too, that we need to like, hey, we need you to consider, you know, like, there might be a little bit more engineering that we need to look at. There might be a little bit more cleanup stuff that we would need to factor in there, you know, so that will, the visioning. But I thought that visioning tying it back to the opportunity zone will really help us with like the design guidelines and all of that, so I was like, you know, we could. We could get a lot of the opportunity zone stuff done through this process and that media pay for it, so.
Uh Darcy, let's see unmuted.
Hey, Darcy. Darcy, did you want to jump in?
She unmuted and walked away.
Possible.
Well, we have her input.
Yeah.
So that's good. Okay, so uh we need a motion then to authorize the city manager to negotiate execute the contract agreement with Storyland. Based upon the E D A grant spoken budget.
But uh you said not to name, oh, then because you needed to have that discussion with her first, who's kind of super. So it's just.
Oh.
Just authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract.
Okay, yeah. All right, we'll take out the name and. Okay, motion by Summer Gory, second by Benjamin McCray. Uh we agree that we authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract agreement. Based on the E D A grant spoken budget, any further discussion from council? Second, any discussion from public? And back to council for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It passes.
Okay.
Being right along.
Yeah, sorry, it was so big. And I did include the legislative update too, cause I wanted you guys to have that.
All right, item twelve is state park per capita grant category submission and authorization. Except and approved proposals for major renovation items authorized the city manager to submit a final application. To the state per capita program for renovation to existing park facilities and authorize city manager to execute an agreement. With the lowest responsive bidder for the replacement of the crash hall roof and floor.
All right, yeah. So this is the hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars that's been allocated to the city, it's a per capita offer is um. Uh allocation, so um our next step is, and Trevor's working on this part of the application. Is the um the budget and justification for each renovation that we're proposing. So you can't do regular maintenance, it has to be some sort of renovation, but all of our facilities need to be renovated to some degree, so. Um so that's an easy one, our biggest um, our biggest project is putting a new roof on crash. Um that's been an expense that we've been looking at for years, um kind of, it's always the scary one, it's like sixty-five thousand dollars. You know, how are we gonna find this money to do it? Well, this is a perfect use of those funds. Um the floor also needs to be redone, so that's a great opportunity. Um and then there are several other renovation projects that we're proposing, um we're proposing some renovations to the tennis courts. Pickleball courts, um those get used a lot by, especially by the pickleball group. So we're kind of transitioning those more to a pickleball group slash tennis court versus tennis court slash pickleball. Um looking at maybe putting some lighting in, um there's some surfacing work that needs to be redone, some line painting. Um renovating the little outdoor basketball courts also, um you know, doing some painting, maybe upgrading the hoops and things. Because those also get used a lot, um and you know, during COVID, those were the facilities we were able to keep open, so um. So that's exciting, um we're also looking at making some improvements to the party room. Because that's a major source of revenue for recreation is the rentals. Um we'd like, you know, it's pretty blue in there, we'd like to break up that color a bit and maybe, you know, look at some flooring. Um, you know, just getting that, we're gonna renovate some of that space in there, like I said, for the the heat press and kind of novelty shop business. Um and we also want to put some effort into the crash hall kitchen, um and in the, there's another action item. Um below about going back out to bid for that project. Uh one of the exciting things about the town square park being funded is it pays off the loan. Um and originally, we had looked at putting a hundred thousand dollars of this allocation towards paying the debt down. So now that we don't have to do that, it gives us more of an opportunity to do more things in our other facilities, so that's really exciting. Um so um, you know, the crash hall kitchen, I think is, I think it's a win-win, I've advocated for it from the beginning. I just think that it's got so many levels of possibilities and um, you know, from starting small businesses. To just increasing revenue for the parks in general, um you know, it's it's just a really good project. So I'd like to go back out to bid for that under a separate action, um and then bring back some costs for consideration later. Um we also want to look at the stage area and see if we can kind of transition and renovate that space into a usable space. Um although it's not E D A accessible, it can be an ancillary space as long as you're, you have space that is access accessible. Um you can use that space in kind of the same manner, so um we're kind of looking at what could be um, could be done with the stage. Cause it's a big chunk of real estate in the hall that really, nothing is being done with, but it would be a great place to. Without even like another exercise area, um it could be an area like a lounge area, it'd be a place where parents can sit and watch their kids skate. Um, you know, a different, we can use it during camps, it could be a study hall area, cause we're still looking at the teen tween club.
Could it mean some railing typically?
Yeah, we think we would put some type of maybe acrylic bar rail up, you know, the kids will probably still want to be able to sit on it, you know. While they're skating, it's kind of the area where you like to rest. Um so we, and then, you know, if we wanted to do music stuff in there in the future too, we wouldn't want to block it all the way off. So we thought maybe, you know, like a three foot high rail or something, but kind of separate it, but um it's a great space too, and if we have. I don't know if you guys have been in lately to see the mural, um the mural's pretty well done, it's pretty spectacular, you know, that the guy did that with a spray.
Oh, retro disco.
Yeah, it's really fun and you know, we, one of the things that we're looking at is um, you know, basketball tournaments and different tournaments. That we could partner with the school, because for a small city, we have two full-size gyms, that's pretty incredible. So the capacity to run different types of tournaments, which, you know, you can make a good amount of money on, you know, concessions. And tournament fees and stuff, so if we can get it back up to the point where people want to come there and there's places for them to sit and watch games and the court's good. Um, you know, it can really increase revenue quite a bit for the for the program, so. Um so we did go out to bid for the flooring and the roof. Um and the reason why we're asking for authorization to accept the bid is because they're like a year out. So you have to get in the queue, um like I just got my roof done and it took over a year. So I had to put down like, you know, a thousand bucks or something and sign it and then it was a year till they actually put my roof on, so. We kind of need to get in because it's a big project, it's not like a filler project, um and the whole roof needs to be tore off. Um and hopefully, it will also allow us in the future to apply for solar panels on it, cause that's one of our limiting factors right now. So roof structure isn't strong enough to hold the solar panel, so this is part of our renovation is that we would kind of shore that up, stabilize it. And then hopefully we could apply for some funding in the future to do that too, so.
This would include gutters, right?
Yes, we need gutters. Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we'll be looking at all of that and, you know, prices may change too, prices are pretty high right now, we don't know what they're gonna be in a year, you know, plywood is. You know, has come down quite a bit, but um, you know, supply chain issue issues are just driving prices up all over, so. You know, we could, we're looking to pick up some cost savings so that we can kind of spread the money around. We'd like to hit every facility with some, you know, with some of this money, cause all the facilities can use it. And it's really an investment in our economic future, so it's great.
I have a motion to authorize this question of the funding categories and authorize the city manager to be the acceptance documents. For the roof and flooring renovation upon approval by the funding.
Motion made by Summer Gory, second by Chris Curran, um to take up the recommended action. Is there any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Back to council for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. All right, and then the kitchen um. Uh fresh hall commercial kitchen bid release is next on the agenda, they authorize the city manager to release the fresh hall. Commercial kitchen bid funding for the project to be identified by city staff and brought back to council for further recommendation. Discussion, direction and action.
Yeah, so we had put this project out to bid prior.
Yeah.
And we were just getting ready to sign a contract and then COVID hit and we couldn't, you know, everything got shut down, we couldn't even let a contractor in the building. And I had been really nervous at that point because it was like, we didn't know if we were gonna need that money just to keep our doors open, so.
We still, it's the US.
Yeah, so we still have the money for the appliances, I think we have twenty-seven thousand, um and, you know, with um. Paying off the town square through the grant, I mean, that grant is like opening up so many opportunities. You know, when we looked at it, because, you know, we were, we had set aside the payoff out of our other fund. Our um Powers Creek District Fund, Fund Thirty-Six. So we've been holding that money and we pulled that out and that had been kind of our little flexible money that we had been using to start some businesses and invest. And visioning and opportunity zone and all that, well, so we have, so essentially we have that money back now. That could be used for investment and that's what originally was gonna pay for the fresh hall kitchen. Um so I wanted to sit down with our accountant, um Scott was out on Friday and he, we just didn't have time. He was pulling all the financials together and we're starting the um the next audit, um but he's gonna be back out next week. And so we wanted to really kind of drill down on those funds and see what we have available and make sure that we feel comfortable um with the position of the city. Um but we both, you know, he kind of said the same thing, I asked him like, what do you think about this investment? So I think it's pretty solid, you know, the numbers are good. You have a payback um opportunity, so you'd be essentially loaning the money to yourself. Um and, you know, just seeing kind of the success of the investment into the snack bar and seeing how that's been going for the park, you know, he's like, it. He, you know, he was um, he had felt pretty good about the city putting that money forward also. Um so the bid process takes a while, you know, I have to put a package together, update everything, you know, go back over it with the inspector. Uh but I'd like to put it back out to bid and just kind of see what the numbers look like, um it doesn't mean that we have to accept the bid or do the project. But I'd like to see what the numbers come in and if it looks like something we could do, I think it's um going along with the whole renovation of Crash Hall. You know, it's um, it just opened so many opportunities, you know, we've even been looking at, you know, names for like. If someone wanted to start a little cafe out of there or, you know, be a concessionaire and, you know, so um it's, it's kind of exciting to see. Some of that burden taken, we have a little bit more flexibility again, so.
Okay, recommended action is to authorize the city manager to release the fresh hall commercial fiction project for viewing purposes. And to bring back a funding proposal at the January council meeting for council review and consideration, so. Motion by Summer Gory, second by Chris Curran, is there any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Back to council for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Okay, coal train opposition position, I thought I'd put this on um the agenda. Other cities are getting involved in it, I know we're not directly um next to the harbor, but it is something that I think we should. Um consider passing because it would affect us as far as our tourism is concerned and just general quality of life.
Yeah, and it's becoming a bigger issue and after you had brought to my attention Adeline. Um I had received some emails from, you know, some other agencies and nonprofit groups to asking us to support that position, so. The more I looked into it, you know, it really is, does have the potential to have a huge impact. Um and as a community that has the first leg of the Great Redwood Trail. I think we're directly um connected to this issue for sure.
I think the county did a uh, they banned um like.
Yeah.
So you're saying we should jump on the train?
Not the coal train, but. I was expecting, I don't, I don't know if we have a template for a letter of some sort.
Yeah, you know, there's, there's a couple. Yeah, and I wasn't really sure how, if you guys wanted to direct staff to take um. Take the first um stab at a letter, if there were some very specific points that you guys as a council wanted us to um. To draft for your consideration. Proceed with this.
Yeah. Some of these, the Homehold Trail Council, they, they did a good job, I think we should be cautious about saying. How feasible and financially. I think we should exclude discussion about the prosperity or the feasibility or the cost. Financial gain of such an endeavor and rather just focus on how it would impact our community.
Yeah, that's why I liked it, the one here from uh. Sure, but increased greenhouse gas emissions, longer development, safety of residents of rural lands and small town. Disasterous impairments too that we could mad revert um. Termination of road backing is there for destruction of both the landmark great over trail and safe by connection. I mean, that, those were like just.
Those.
Yeah. Stare, stare away from them.
Do you guys want to um maybe highlight some major aspects of it and then I could um work on a draft? I could even email it out to you guys separately if you wanted to get some. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I like the bullet point from this, on this letter from um. Well, I like the bullet point from this, on this letter from, I just, you know, I think it is from. But I lo, I just like those bullet points that if they were highlighted for us to only switch to something about us being a part of the Great Redwood Trail and then disasters came up to the, to the Mad River basin.
It's good to note to the, how our congressmen and yeah, their representative and sorry, both are representatives already said. Appropriate and um,
no.
and then rotation. Right, and then think of, you know, McGuire for, you know, the Grand Redwood Trail stuff. This is just not the direction our communities try to take.
We will trust you to proceed with that.
Okay.
You could, uh, if you wanted to send it out for some feedback before the next meeting.
Yeah, do you, um, do you want me to bring it back at the next meeting or do you want me to go ahead and get some feedback amongst everyone or a couple of you and then go ahead and get it over for signature and out sooner or?
Do you think, do you have time to do that before the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I can draft the letter.
Yeah, I was just thinking like, how much more do you want on your plate?
Yeah, I know, I, things are going really well right now. We're good, we're doing good.
So the motion should be something that affected the offer of the city manager to draft a letter expressing our opposition to the coal training project, whatever it's considered. The coal train idea. If it's only our idea right now. But there's been a lot of opposition.
And do you want it specifically to the um, to the funding agency to not support it or do you want it both? Opposition in general and asking them not to um, support their funding application. But I think that's what they're really asking, um, right, very specifically is to write toward to um, I don't know if it's federal highways or transportation to not support their application for funding.
Yeah.
So I can kind of write it in like, we're asking you to not support this application and also.
Vulnerable Carlos Monti, under Secretary, Department of Treasury, is that transportation?
Budidus.
Yeah, Budidus, oh, why is it not called?
Is that the phone line?
Oh, I don't know. I thought it was two. Your undersecretary. It's going to be undersecretary.
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, the last one is.
Yeah. All right, so we're, should we, should we go again then?
Can we kind of make it? Overall, we're against it and we're very specifically asking you not to. Okay, right. And then the bullet points of why.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor to offer as the city manager to draft a letter to uh, express our opposition to the coal train? Bring it back in the next next meeting, uh, next appropriate meeting. Bring it back to the next regular meeting.
Bring it back, okay.
You know, to the, um, don't name a meeting in case it has to be.
Okay. Okay, motion made by, I'm sorry, second, mentioned McCree to offer as the city manager to draft a letter for our position of coal training like here. Is the third Tuesday or fourth Tuesday is twenty-fifth? Yeah. All right, any further discussion from council? Any discussion from public? Back to council for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. So we are now to the fifth and J Street stop sign discussion and direction.
Was this the only spot that there was additional stop signs?
Well, you know. Yeah, yeah, this was one that we kind of missed. It's a very obvious place where it should be a four-way stop. Um, and I think when we did the larger project, I think we just missed it.
So when we, so when we did the larger project, though, we had talked about coming back and relooking at J and I.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And so anything on the I that we?
Yeah, so my, that's part of our LRSP um, grant. So um, that's one of the kind of byproducts of doing that, that local road safety plan is looking at areas who, that have issues and we've identified that that is an issue area. And then that grant allows you to then come up with um, recommendations and implementation strategies. Um, and they're supposed to be not like, like, oh, we need a bypass, but like, hey, maybe we just need a bump out or a chicane or we need a little landscape or we just need a stop sign, you know. So we're gonna use this grant because it gives us the engineering justification to make those improvements. This one's pretty straightforward. There's not enough site distance. Um, and it's just a very, it's a pretty highly used intersection because a lot of people come off of that straightaway and then hit the boulevard. So in the mornings, a lot of people are leaving for work and they're blowing through their pretty high rates of speed. So it's um, it's just an area that really, you feel like it's a four-way stop, like it should be. And it's not. And so there's a lot of that like, oh, oh, gosh, I didn't, you know.
J Street is all four-way stops.
Right, so. Yeah, and this is the one where they just go, oh, there's no stop sign there and I'm just gonna pick up speed, so.
My, my question on this one was, do we need to go back and update the ordinance to include this?
We don't. So the way we did it last time is we um, we changed that process. Because in the past, you had to go out, you know, you had to go through an ordinance process. So we changed that and it actually allows the city manager to go out and make those, to make that change. Um, but I wanted to make sure that I also had council's authorization as well. So yeah, we cleaned that up because it was, I mean, we couldn't do anything without going through a full ordinance process.
I know, that was, as soon as I saw it, like, oh, no.
I know. Yeah, no, we, yeah, so we cleaned all of that up and, um, so we don't have to do that anymore.
So where else come with this stuff?
I know, I know. I'm a firm friend of stop signs.
The inverted speed bump, um, uh, wall and A is by the way, very fast today.
Oh, like our pothole?
No, it's.
No?
Instead of a speed hump, it's like a speed inverted.
Oh, yeah.
And so it's like a dip, so there's drainage.
Right.
People fly through there and they're like.
Yeah, I think it's called like a failing uh, water line or some things, it's a piece, it's one of the lines is probably said, we have a lot of those in town where we just have a little bit of settling of the lines. And you'll see them, you're kind of like, oh.
I think, no, if you look at the roadway like A along there is higher and then wall drops a little bit. So there's like this dip, but I mean it, it could be a failure. There is a.
We have a few of those, like they work, they're slowing down. If I go, they're gonna turn to a sinkhole or something. Tell me they're safe, right?
So we um, we will move that the, there be stop sign put at the corner of Fifth and J Street?
Yeah.
Would you know, okay. Looked by Summer Dory, thank you for this period. To have a stop sign with the Fifth and J, four-way stop, so that'd be four stop signs. A little flag somewhere in front.
Yeah.
People that it's really happening. Any further discussions from council? Any input from public, back to council for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Council correspondent, the big lead of cities.
Very highlight.
Update, yeah. I haven't reviewed it, I didn't know, I, I don't know where I was, I wasn't able to go.
Yeah.
You went though. It's been a while now. I know, that's the problem. It's been a while and I did, and I did do an update.
You did.
But I didn't bring it for tonight, but um, yeah.
There's a lot.
Sin bills, yeah, yeah, this is that time of year where there's, right, turned out.
Yeah. Okay, um, so if there's no action there, we'll move on to consent agenda, the warrants and dispersments. Any more need to follow? Anything, our members. We, we got our grant for our town squares. All right, so you made a motion that we pay the warrants?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, pay the warrants.
All second.
First and there's a second by a link. Open, any further discussion? Any discussion from public? Back to council for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reports of council and staff, we have a city manager report.
Yeah, the only reason I did it separate is just because that tracking sheet has some citizens' names on it and I wasn't really sure that it was appropriate to have their projects.
Oh, I see.
I don't think there is not anything.
Yeah, it's, it's controversial, but.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
I like that format.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, we really need to clean that spreadsheet up, but that's, um, so Gary and Mike and I, we meet monthly. Um, on this, this is our project list that I have going with SHN. Um, and so we use this as our tracking and it, it gets all over the place and, you know, I'll try and keep including it and I'll clean it up a little bit. Um, there's a lot of projects. Um, we started doing this about seven, eight months ago. I mean, it's really helped us to keep these on track because all of a sudden we just got a lot of little grants and a lot of things happening and SHN actually hired another staff member just to keep up with Blue Lake stuff. So it's been, it's been good. I mean, you know, Mike is always the basket case when he gets some liquid. He's the C, or the CEO of SHN, but then after pull him in, I'm like, okay, Mike, did you get this done? We're CEO of this place. I'm like, I know, but you're the city engineer, so.
Right. I do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you for the city manager report, financial report. Couple questions.
On, so uh, just to clarify the show building that that all fell through.
Yeah.
Okay. How about the red radish?
The red radish sold. Andy Jones um, purchased that. I believe he had a couple of investment partners, but yeah, so he purchased that. Um, and I haven't really sat down with them to kind of see what their plans are. I think right now it's probably kind of status quo. You know, I think the Wildlife Institute, they are supposed to be building a new place on Essex. They have some property there. I don't know when that's going to start. Um, but we'll definitely be talking with Andy about what he sees as, you know, the next use for the commercial space. Um, cause that's, you know, that's a really important building and it's important that it doesn't leave commercial, that we don't lose that to some residential, so.
Well, the upstairs is residential.
Yeah, so, yeah. Carrie, yeah, I just, yeah, we, we kind, we've lost so much of our commercial space to residential over the years, but we're, we're taking a pretty hard recommendation stance on that, that, you know, that not be considered for residential because we just don't have enough commercial spaces. I mean, you could rent it out easily for a residential, but you know, we're just losing all that capacity to have a downtown.
How about stardoes?
So um, I have an update. I have um, one of our firefighters is actually was meeting with them today, I think, to tour the building. Um, they've told me it's for sale. Um, originally they wanted eight hundred thousand, which is way too much. Um, but I believe that they're, um, I believe they've come down significantly because I think everyone like had sticker shock and walked away. So um, he was supposed to be touring it today. He uh, it's Jake Hudson. He was actually starting Humboldt Juice Bar over at Salt Fish House, um, right when COVID hit. So he has a fifteen thousand dollar cold press juicer. He's got three thousand like etched glassware things. He, he had a beautiful bar setup and then COVID hit and he was like, I, you know, how do you start a business during COVID? And so he wants to do it in Blue Lake and he also was like that pizza oven, like, you know, pizza or I buy to partner with someone, I was like, hey, Chris, or something like pizza. You know, so, uh, so he is all about it. He's just a little go-getter entrepreneur and he's got some really great ideas. So he, you know, I said, hey, you should go, go call those guys and see, you know. Um, and he did and they were like, yeah, we'll show it to you on Tuesday. So hopefully they showed it to him. Um, but we're really pushing, trying to find someone to purchase that. We need to get that out of their hands for sure.
And the property on Hatchery Road, I noticed the sign is down.
Yeah.
Sold.
It was sold, so Kyle Barton bought that.
Kyle Hatchery, the, the Calpon?
Uh, no, the Nick Frank property.
The property, oh.
Yeah. Yeah, so that.
Who, who bought it?
Kyle Barton. Um, you know, uh, uh, Virginia Janks, um, he's around. He's one of the
Oh.
So longstanding Blue Lake family. Um, Kyle's kind of a, he's kind of a developer, like a little bit smaller scale developer. Um, he's local. He's deeply rooted in Blue Lake, super nice. Um, and he, we have a meeting with them next week um, to talk about what their development plan is. So he's working with Sarah Atkins, um, who had been working with Nick Frank when we were helping him kind of get a development plan and Kyle really liked the idea of having like a retail commercial on the bottom floor and residential on the top and you know, maybe up to six units. He had a lot more um, realistic, you know, ideas on what that potential was. So uh, I'm excited that he's gonna be moving that forward. He said he wants to start construction in spring, summer, if I'm going, so that'll be nice. And then the um, Hoxwell property.
Yeah.
Um, that also sold. So Dane Gritness and his wife bought that and Dane's a local real estate person. And he.
His wife Angie has Angie tried.
Oh, nice.
She's, yeah, so Angie thought, she's still in Moscow and my kid is.
Oh, nice, okay. Yeah, so they've been talking about turning that into kind of like an event venue as well, which I think would be great, kind of like an Arrington apples, you know, where.
We need a wedding.
Yeah, which would be great for our, with our campground, our rehab, people to stay there. It's the Hoxwell's property, so across from the brewery, uh, the city's little well site there and you go down that lane. Yeah, so they've been doing a lot of work.
Yeah. They've been throwing out trees and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's nice. I mean, they're younger, they've got a lot of energy, they've got some resources.
What was the family name?
Uh, Gritness, and I don't know what.
Actually, the Angie part of the budget.
Oh.
So, okay, so something's. And then Calon, we're still working with Calon. Uh, we sent stuff over to our attorneys to look at. Um, Russ, you know, was like, you know, we gotta make sure the city would be protected. Um, he was looking at some type of structure where the city wouldn't, could be part of the deal, but not on the hook for the liability issues. Um, and he said there were some, some mechanisms um, that he had proposed, some. So we're getting a recommendation from Russ on that as well.
That to be lawyered up.
Yeah.
As far as how it's gonna be.
Yeah, and then um, the surplus lands, um, we're just going through that process. We've had one person um, who sent, who actually called and, you know, we I tried to set up a time to talk with her. She was like, okay, I want to just, what we would do is we'll just buy all the land and we'll just build all this stuff. I was like, um, okay, we should have a conversation and then she never called back, so. Um, so we haven't really had a lot of interest. You know, we've had some people like the school, like you're selling your land, you want to sell it to the school? And I know, no, but we had to let you know because you're, you know, another entity in our, in our district, so.
It's so funny, like, here, by the way, but we're not actually.
I know.
Okay, any other questions for Andy? She knows what's going on in this town.
Do you have a question? Our, our tank's okay?
Yes, so, I'm, yeah, so we had some vandalism to our, to take number two up near Pete Busman's property on the road going out of the old two ninety-nine.
This is the redwood?
They're both redwood, yeah. Um, they literally took a chainsaw. They, they dug underneath our fence and you wouldn't even know where this tank is. I mean, to get to it on the road, you have to go up and around and up and around. It's really scary. But you can hop up to it from the old two ninety-nine. Um, but they dug a hole underneath the ground with their chainsaw came in and they cut two slits into the tank. We lost two hundred thousand gallons of water initially before we. We lost two hundred thousand gallons of water initially before we caught it, but then we had no way to stop it, so we literally had to let five hundred thousand gallons of water almost completely drain out. We're luck, we're really lucky, we could have lost the whole thing.
Yeah.
The tanks aren't super stable anyways and we have a pending grant with FEMA right now for like, I think it's one point six million to replace. Well, we got wall and construction in, so.
It fixed it?
So we've got a patch on it and we think it's gonna hold. We had, Public Works has been on it literally for twenty-four hours, so they came in this morning at one thirty, started filling, came back at three o'clock, started filling more, we have to chlorinate each step of the way to disinfect. We got it full and then we started screening another leak, so we got wall and back out to do another patch. It's, you know, it's, it's just past its prime and this type, what happens when you, when you release the water on these tanks, it releases a pressure and the pressure is what's holding, you know, pushing it against the bands that are holding on the outside, so every time you drop your pressure, it puts, you know, it, you know, it just works since everything up, so. So this is basically an act of terrorism, you know, so it's, I contact, I've been in contact with the FBI. They'll go to Homeland Security, we've notified the state, the state's notified all the other municipal districts because, you know, this is a type of stuff, you know, you can, you can really harm a city really quickly, easily by messing with someone's water system, whether that's putting something in it or destroying it. I mean, it's, it is our tank for fire suppression. Luckily, we're not in fire season. And so, you know, just all the things that we.
That amount of water on, on, how much can the land still?
Yeah, well, that's our other concern, you know, is like eroding the base, you know. It's, it could be really good for us though, because we called FEMA right away and said, where's our grant application at? Like, we just had this happen, you know, this is something that we've been concerned about, they, we, we had identified this as a vulnerability.
Yeah.
And we identified it in our hazard mitigation plan as well, and so they said, what's, you know, you're going through the process, it's on the desk, I think we'll get funded for it, but this may help speed up the process too. So we put cameras up, today I went and got game cameras and then we got, I ran to Costco and bought the solar floodlights, so there'll be floodlights all the way around and then we'll look at what other kind of camera system we can get up there. We do have, I believe you have power on that one. I know we have up on the Buckley one, because we have a SCADA system on them, so I think we can run off the wifi posulated connector camera system. They're just, you know, you're just kind of in some weird areas there, but we do have a SCADA which gives us alerts when our tanks are dropping or having problems, so. Yeah, it was pretty scary though. We went up and I was like, oh my gosh. And there was just so much water coming out, you know, and they put two slits in it. They, I mean, they took a chainsaw and, and then went to another side and did it. So, yeah, I, and I don't have, it's so different than what like our normal little stupid vandalism stuff is, this is very. Yeah, I know, yeah, and there's nothing like, you know, the cities haven't done anything, we haven't prosecuted anyone, there's nothing like that, so.
There's no bridges right now, I think, but I know, and they want the wood, I, I don't.
Well, that was my first thought, did they want, were they just trying to get the redwood? But the way they did it, it was very, you know, it's like, maybe when you made your first cut and all the water came rushing out, like, you'd be like, whoa, I'm out of here. So to go make the second one, you know, they had to be so cute, because, I mean, it was a lot of water, I, I mean, it was, it was a crazy amount of water coming out, so. They were cuts about like this long, so. So we're falling through on all different levels and we're also using this as anything, you know, the state water board's already like, oh, we'll help you anyway. We're gonna make some calls, like, it's like, yeah, see, we're at four times, we don't know, it's our fires, they're crashing.
Right, and don't forget the, the fire on the hill.
Yes, and as we said, you just never know, you know, it's not really that much water if something big happens, so.
So I kind of blew, blew off reports from council. HCOs didn't have a meeting this month, so we're not, we're not meeting until January. I don't know if anyone else had any.
We, I was redact, but I was flying and, I mean, I was flying. And you went to the.
HWMA, I was in Portugal, but, oh, there were a couple of exciting things, like Maggie mentioned, we did get a consultant for SB thirteen eighty-three. So I read over the whole proposal, it looks really good, and all of the jurisdictions are sharing in the cost of that, so it's like three thousand dollars under us. Pretty minor, and the first thing they're gonna do, because all of the regulations is pretty different, I'm very first, the first thing the firm is gonna do is apply for waivers.
Oh, yeah.
Like for us, especially as a smaller jurisdiction, so, yeah, that seems like a good plan and like we'll actually get like a, you know, an actual implementation plan and we'll actually know how to move forward, so. That was good. And then the new executive director, he has been hired. I have to tell you, his name is Peter, Peter Kohler, and yeah, Jill Duffy, her last day was just a couple of weeks ago. And so Peter started, yeah, November thirtieth, I think, or December first. And, yeah, he seems great, he's really excited to be here, came from New Mexico and it's just like really enthusiastic, lots of area. Settling in nicely and, yeah, so she got in and Jill agreed to stay on as needed for up to a certain amount of hours, so she's just kind of giving him the space, but totally available and willing to help, so. That's also good that she's still here in Mobile.
Yeah, I know, it's, oh, I know, and we're at a ton of, yeah.
Blue Lake Fire has two openings on their board. And so there's economic development, I think has one, right?
One, yeah.
Yeah.
And parks has two.
Wait, sorry, Chamberlain had that for a little while, so that was. And Public Safety did their, their whole, yeah.
All right, future agenda items, Ben. Well, everything that was done here has to come back.
Like you. I was gonna say, yeah, can we make sure that the places are prepared to pick up, they get it on there, even if it's not discussed?
Yeah. I, after I did the agenda and started talking, I was like, here.
Yeah. Part facility and the first use policy. How is staff doing on that?
Yeah, so Trevor's been, he's met with all of the directors and I'll let him talk about it, but he's going to be pulling them in for their first meeting in January, getting that back going, and we've talked a lot about, you know, the direction we're going, some of the impacts we had for prior years and the concerns and.
Right, you missed that concert.
That was a good one.
Okay, you're muted, Trevor.
There we go, sorry about that. So, yeah, we're gonna reform the committee. I'm hoping to do a formal needs assessment to determine, you know, what the best course of action is, both among participating recreationists as well as, you know, kind of a small general circle around the area. I know that a lot of people are interested in recreating in Blue Lake because, well, the weather sucks more inland, or more coastal, so. We're, we're moving towards trying to ensure that we're meeting the needs of everybody, kids included, so we'll try and loop them into the committee as well, so that we can, you know, get, get a little bit of insight from populations that we don't generally associate with, so. I don't have a ton of updates, besides, we're really trying hard to move dirt and get people recreating in, in Blue Lake. It's been a bit of a steep learning curve, but I think we're getting squared away. I, I've been meeting with people regarding reforming the committee, so hopefully that'll come to fruition soon.
Trevor's doing a lot of work on the bike park project, so that's really picking up some steam and we had a, Emily and Trevor and I met today talking about next steps and fundraising and designs and just, you know, getting some general enthusiasm for the project and building these partnerships. It was approved through the planning commission at their last meeting, so that was great and they were very, they were actually really excited about it, I was like, even Rick was like, yes, I was like, oh, God, we're, we're making a believer out of them, so. So that's been really fun. We're gonna kick off some marketing stuff here pretty soon. We're gonna have some, some stickers, some t-shirts, and some, you know, some banners, like future home of type stuff and just kind of really kind of get that out there so people can kind of start to see the concept and, you know, see where they can take part. Also, just looking at raising funds too, you know, looking at levels of sponsorship, whether it's a corporate sponsorship or, you know, just grassroots. They're gonna be having the cyclocross event out there, the Mad Scramble. And that part of that, the proceeds from that, they're gonna donate towards the bike park, so that'll be fun. They're gonna be doing a gear swap, I think at Crash Hall with RCMBA, and they're donating the proceeds of that to the bike park. So there's just some really fun stuff happening. We do have, Adeline, you had asked about the, the little trail challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's part of our, we had about six thousand dollars worth of in-kind match that we had to provide for the Andy Mary Trail. And previously, we had said that we would do like the bike rodeo and different things, well then, with COVID, we weren't able to do any of that, so we were trying to figure out a way to get people to go experience the trail without having to pull people together in a group, so we came up with this kind of adventure challenge program, so people can, you know, go experience the trail, we're adding new stuff to it. We're gonna link it also to the businesses, so we're gonna start a little campaign where Darcy's gonna be giving away the first, the first prize will be a free lunch at the doghouse, so we'll do like a weekly drawing. You can get as many tickets as you want for doing, you know, it's, it's basic stuff, like, you know, tell us what color the benches. We put some geocaches out to try to get people moving in a broader sense in Blue Lake, so that's kind of fun. And then we'll do a grand prize drawing, so if you complete the whole card, you can enter the card in, you get a ticket for the grand prize and we're looking at maybe doing like a bike or some, you know, like something big. But it, we've been able to put this out on like Facebook and stuff and we can track through the, kind of the backend metrics, we can see how many times it's been shared, how many people it's reached, so then I can equate that to kind of a dollar value to show that like, we are promoting it, and that way I can get campaigns to sign off on our side, so. We'll be doing little event promotions as we go, we've, we've got some little different stickers that we're gonna do, we've got some little banners we're gonna put up, so just, you know, kind of keeping a little bit of enthusiasm about the trail and stuff. It gets used by a ton of people, it's like, you know, so. Yeah, Emily and I both got crickets, which are these like little CNC design machines where you can do like stickers, decals, and shirts, and iron on and all that stuff, so we've just been like, we can do all of these things, so there'll be lots of stickers coming out and decals.
All right, any other questions or comments? We can wrap this up later than normal, I'm afraid, sorry for that. Need a motion to adjourn? Looked at second to adjourn, Senator Doherty. And Chris Curran. Any, any comments? Public, all of the favorites say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, next meeting, January twenty-sixth, six thirty P M.
I'll have some minutes. Bye, Emily.
Hi there. Hey, Mandy, I had a quick question. I was applying for some grants for the bike park. Do you know if we have a physical address for the bike park yet?
We probably don't have a physical address, but we can have a parcel number.
Okay, if I could grab that from you tomorrow.